Good evening, everyone. This is our regular Committee of the Whole meeting, January 11th, 2021, held via WebEx for the City of Southfield, Southfield City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Thanks. Present. Bridwell.
Here.
Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Present.
Morris.
Present. Please.
Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum, and there are a host of other department heads and the mayor, city administration that is on the call as well.
And at this time, I'd like to ask if you're not speaking, would you please mute your line? We have a lot of noise in the background. Thank you very much. I'd also like to take a moment at this time to just take a moment of silence, just in view of what was going on at the Capitol, and to let everyone know that we're in unity here in Southfield, and we feel really bad, and we want the healing to start. And we are leaders here in Southfield, so we start by leading. I'm just going to take a moment of silence and ask you all to join me in recognition of those that have lost their lives due to what happened, and also just to send a message that we are united here in the City of Southfield, and we are leaders. And we hope that, and we feel and know that things will get better. We'll take a moment of silence now. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Our first item, we have a lot on the agenda tonight, so we're going to stick closely to what's going on and what's on the agenda. And so we're going to go ahead and get started. Our first item is the proposed ordinance, small cell facilities.
Yes. Good evening, Madam President. This is Dawn Kane from the City Attorney's Office.
Hi, Dawn.
A brief introduction, and I want to say good evening and also happy new year to everyone in the City Council, mayor and other department heads. So we do have an ordinance from our office regarding small cell wireless facility. A brief introduction to small cell wireless facility is a cellular network facility capable of delivering high transmission speeds but at lower ranges. They're called "small," but this is a reference to their small coverage area, not their physical size. These facilities, due to their heightened transmission speeds and capacities, are critical to the wireless industry's deployment of what you always hear of the 5G services. However, when it's compared to what we see, the macro, traditional macro cell towers, they're only able to transmit data at low ranges, but not capable of transmitting through buildings and other structures. So there need more of these to cover the same geographic area that a single traditional macro cell tower would cover. It's estimated that these wireless providers will need at least 10 times as many small cell wireless facilities as the traditional cell towers. So you have these major providers of personal wireless services, such as Verizon, AT&amp;T, like enhancing their existing 4G networks while they're trying to construct and transition to the 5G networks. So this ordinance will address some things that have happened over the last several years. Initially, the small cell providers will construct these facilities on light poles and traffic signals, which you see in our rights-of-way. But the reality is, is that we should expect that a few of these small wireless facilities will be constructed in this manner. Reality, many of them are going to be co-located on existing water utility poles. Back in 2018, the FCC had issued a decree ruling and addressed how municipalities must process small cell wireless facility applications. There was something called the "shot clock," about how long we had to process those permits. And so recently, it was trying to put some limitation on the aesthetic value in terms of where they could be placed in residential areas and historic areas. Michigan also passed their legislation in 2018 through Public Act 365. So these applications are only going to increase, as you always hear, 5G. So this ordinance will allow Southfield to enact aesthetic standards and when applicable, undergrounding requirements and zoning restrictions were permitted. So what councilmen received was the proposed ordinance. I want to first, before I go any further, just thank planning and also engineering. Also have Mike Wasser from Protech that will answer some questions. This is an ever-changing area where wireless providers want more control and pay less to use our public rights-of-way. But in that packet that you receive, along with the ordinance, you just see a permit application, as well as, I believe it was like a mapping and areas, and what we would like to see in the areas when these small cell wireless facilities are constructed in certain areas. And so what I have also included, and I'm not sure if it's going to be pulled up, there was a brief slideshow. And by the way, we did present this to Legislative Committee back in December, and I did attach something, but it came in black and white. So I did have the Clerk's Office send out a slideshow with colored photos to show the progression of these small cell wireless facilities and what they may start to look like as we see more of these being built in our rights-of-way. So I'm not sure if it can be put on the screen or not.
Dawn, there is not a slide ready for that. It's not been inserted.
Okay, I thought it was. I've been asked, Madam President, were you able to see the colored slideshow that was emailed out to the floor council?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Were you able to see the slideshow, the colored photos of wireless facilities on poles? There were about only five or six.
Yes, I was.
Okay, and I don't know if everyone else.
Was the rest of the council able to, or did you receive the colored slides on the small cell?
Dawn, I have the PowerPoint. I can share it if I'm giving.
Yes, they were emailed out.
I'm sorry, Madam President. Mike Wasser from Protech is also on the line to answer any questions as he's in the Legislative Committee. He has a PowerPoint, but I don't know if he's able to share it or not. It was just a visual to see what we're dealing with as the wireless providers come to the public rights-of-way and want to start constructing these facilities, which is hoping this ordinance to regulate that. So I'm not sure if that's going to happen for him to share his screen or not. I will leave that to IT.
Madam President, Mr. Wasser could share his screen. We would just make him a presenter temporarily, if that's the route you want to go.
Yes, that would be most helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Wasser, we did just make you a presenter, so you can share your screen.
Super.
And then just, when you're done, just give it back to us.
Oh, you know, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I have been working along with your other staff for some months to put this together. The reason we're being particular about this is that the industry, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, et cetera, they need, as they have stated, and the FCC has stated, they need millions of these antennas. And if you break that down by 50 states and so on, that means tens of thousands for Michigan. And you should assume that Southfield, being in the center of metropolitan Detroit, is going to have a lot of these applications coming. And so we need to be concerned not only with the initial applications, which we just have a few of at the moment, but the likely hundreds coming. And so your staff has done a fabulous job. The item that I like the most of all the things you're going to look at, the ordinance and the application and the permit, is the map, which we talked about. And I don't want to say whether it was planning or engineering or all together, but the map, I think, will be very helpful to us and to the industry to spell out where these things can go with some impunity and where they can go with an awful lot of care, if at all. And so I suggest that you take a look at that map. So Dawn edited my PowerPoint. It was much too long for one evening or five evenings, down to a few slides, and really to convey a sense of what are we talking about here when we talk about "small cells"? That's a term of art that the industry coined. They're very smart. I'm going to ask you at the end of this two-minute presentation whether you think any of these items are small. So the PowerPoint talks about a variety of bills that have occurred in Michigan in the last 20 years that have taken away a lot of your ability to control your right-of-way, your franchising rights. There's a new Court of Appeals case that we think might bring all that back. That's a few years down the road, but there's hope. So here, here we go. So this is probably one of my worst examples of a "small cell." This is a picture of a street-side cell tower out in Arizona that has a law very much like the Michigan law, and it allows structures like this, arguably. And these are small cells. Show of hands, who thinks that's small? It has equipment at the bottom, it has equipment inside, it has antennas on the top. It's really big. In fact, it's the size of an industrial refrigerator in terms of what the statute allows. When they say "small cell," they then, next time, when you look at the numbers in the statute, it's actually 30-plus cubic feet. And that happens to correspond with this nice Samsung industrial refrigerator. Here's another example of what Sprint, once upon a time, thought was a small cell. That edifice is 120 feet tall, six feet around, and there's a man standing down there at the bottom, and he's a good-sized guy. And you can see he is absolutely dwarfed by what the industry a couple of years ago thought was a small cell. You are one of the lead members and board members of Protech. Protech, along with a number of other cities and organizations around the country, fought this tooth and nail, and we won. So thank you for your support. So we're not talking about this, but that device, that's still sitting up in Flint where it was installed, and we'd like to get rid of it, but I need to get the go-ahead from Flint to do so. This is probably much more typical of what you're going to see. You've got an existing utility pole, and on the sides, not too clear, but it'll be clearer on some other slides, there's some equipment. And then up at the top, you see the antennas and the various arrays up there. And that's probably what's coming to your neighborhood. These are a little more, I suppose, conducive to not catching too many eyes, but still, they're significant in size. And it's, again, another thing that's coming. You have a lot of latitude, arguably, in what you allow. They just want to put their antennas in. What it looks like, of course, they want the cheapest, easiest, like the last slide, but if you push, and if you get into some areas that are historic or otherwise sensitive, you can start asking for these kinds of poles and particular colors, matching colors, for instance, in the area. These devices are what the cable industry is now hanging pursuant to the state statute and the FCC rule, which is on appeal, by the way, again, with Protech and your support. But these devices are actually quite small, much more on the order of a breadbox. And I applaud the cable industry for doing this. And I look at the AT&amp;Ts and Verizons and say, "Well, if cable can do it, how come you can't?" So that's a game that is still being played out. But the kicker here is that on the basis of your cable franchise for video service, right? They are installing these wireless antennas. And if you look in your franchise for cable, you're not going to find anything in there about antennas for wireless service. That is another point of contention. No one has, I'm sorry, no one has raised it formally. I'm hoping that somebody does, and I'm hoping I'm there when it happens. So we're looking for cities that want to contest these kinds of issues. But again, Protech has pushed and pushed, so you just need to know, when you see some of these, that's what's going on. That's part of the wireless industry that the cable industry is trying to get into. The law, Dawn referenced, PA 365. Protech, on its own, with your support, fought this law tooth and nail throughout 2018. We lost our partners. MML and MTA both conceded to the law. We darn near beat it, but without the partners, it was a tough fight. But these are the laws. They became effective a year and a half ago. And so we've been trying to get caught up and get ahead of the game. And I believe the ordinance and application and permit and the mapping will do that for you. This is an interesting summary of all of the, not only have you lost control over the last 20 years of your right-of-way in many respects, at least according to these statutes written by the industry, you've also lost revenue. And for a community just north of you that is not all that dissimilar, but probably half the size of Southfield, you see the total annual loss that we calculated based on giving up these rights. For instance, the cell tower that we were looking at, well, let's take this one. We had done a franchise with Sprint after we beat them up at the FCC in a city just east of here. And we charged, I believe it was $1,800 a year for that cell tower. I don't know what you're getting for your cell towers on other city property, but it's probably $30,000 a year. So for this smaller cell on top of an existing pole, we still got $1,800 per year, plus $1,000 or $2,000 for application fee and so on. The Michigan Act allows them to come into your right-of-way, pay you $200, and then every year, they're going to write you a check per pole for $20. The negotiated improvement of that bill, not Protech, MML and MTA did that, was a 10% increase to that $20 every five years. So you'll get $22 in five years for that pole. And if I sound like I'm being critical, I guess I am. So we have given up huge dollars, 3.5 million, in the city, communities just north of you. And I think that's representative of where you're at as well. And the solutions are, and mind you, enforce your constitutional rights. That Court of Appeals case that came out, I was involved in, and it says uniquely, uniquely, not only in Michigan but across the country, that cities have an unassailable right to control their right-of-way and notwithstanding anybody, including the legislature, attempt to curtail it. And so we're, again, we're hoping to use that Court of Appeals case for your benefit in the years to come. So that's my quick two cents.
Thank you very much. Dawn, did you want to add anything else?
No, Madam President. At this time, I would turn it over to you if there was any questions.
Okay, well, I will go to the council. Council, I will entertain any questions or comments that you might have regarding this topic. And we'll start with you, Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you. The only question that I had, that I think may have been answered on several of the slides, it showed that the towers were either close to or connected to the light post. And so I just wanted to confirm that that would be a possibility, that either they could be integrated with the light post or attached to.
Yes, typically what they're doing is they're taking the DTE poles and replacing them with sturdier poles to accommodate the additional equipment, and then installing the facilities on those poles. That's actually, that's, let's see. That's probably a good example of an existing pole that was used, probably replaced, and then the antennas put up on the top.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes. My question is, can you please explain again how this affects the cable franchise fee?
Well, what Comcast primarily convinced our Michigan legislature of, and the FCC back in 2018, is that they want to be able to compete with the wireless industry, AT&amp;T and Comcast and Verizon. You may recall that AT&amp;T and Verizon moved into their territory back in 2006 with the video service law, where they tossed cities out of the business of regulating cable companies. So now cable companies have come back and said in 2018, "We want to get into the wireless business, and we already have these franchise agreements allowing us to put wires in the right-of-way, and we're paying a hefty price for that. Well, we'd like to amend those agreements and add these wireless facilities." And the FCC, which has been particularly willing to do whatever the industry asks, said, "Okay." And then the state legislature said the same thing. And so that's why we have these antennas showing up on your cable lines.
But that doesn't affect the current fees that we charge or that we collect?
Correct. My argument, of course, would be if they're going to do more in the right-of-way, they should pay more. But, yeah, that didn't happen.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. We had a lengthy discussion about this in the Legislative Committee. But I just want, either you, Mike, or you, Dawn, just to kind of explain again just how we can better regulate the aesthetic of the small cells with our ordinance. You know, as you were going through, obviously, there are some that are, you know, small. I'm using quote-fingers when I say "small," "small cells." And obviously, we're nervous about having something like that in Southfield. But if you could just explain how this ordinance will help protect us against that.
Dawn, would you like me to do it, or you want to?
Well, I guess we can do it together. Like I said, thanks to planning, put together the map. And there's going to be some requirements, for example, that it needs to still enhance the area where it's at. I know that the Ninth Circuit, Mike, and you may want to correct me on this, as far as with the FCC, they were really trying to limit our zoning, our ability to, to, I'm trying to think of the word, to really say what they can do in certain areas. So by having the ordinance with the map, it does set some standards with the height, with the coloring, so that they just don't come in haphazardly and throw up a pole, take an existing pole, and just, you know, put up what they want. So Mike, I'll let you tag-team on that.
Good, yeah. And thank you, Dawn. So the legislature and the FCC left you very little room to maneuver. And so to hear them tell it, the industry can do whatever they want and just stay out of their way. But so this ordinance, it clings to the statute because that is what most folks wanted in order to avoid getting into a fight with AT&amp;T and Verizon. But so what we've tried to do is, on the aesthetics portions, give you that room that we can. And so the map creates designated areas that are sensitive and will ideally give you an opportunity to say to whoever, "You know what? We're going to watch you very closely here. We're going to have a lot of rules about this." And those rules are continuing to be developed as we go here. But the map is a great starting point to just put the industry on notice. You can do what you like, perhaps to some extent over here in this industrial area. But we're going to be very sensitive in the historical districts or the high-end commercial districts, and of course, the residential neighborhoods.
Through the chair, this is Planner Crowe. Just to echo, we did do a study of our three business districts, our couple historic districts and other sensitive areas. And we come up with a color palette that matches streetscape furnishings and other historic colors in the district, so at least we can complement or blend in a little bit better.
Okay, great. Thank you. Was there anything else for you, Councilman Hoskins?
Nope, that was it. That answered my question.
Thank you.
It's one of the few ordinances that will include a map like this. I'm very pleased about it. You may see others adopt it.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Madam President, I think I'm okay right now. I think pretty much most of the questions have been asked at this point for me, so I'll pass on this one.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. One, in section 1324F, it has zoning review. Was that the only change in that document that was sent?
This is Dawn, and someone said "change."
Yeah, the highlighted area, it says "zoning review." Was that something that was new, or what?
Well, we were just, okay, I see what you're saying, because it came up. Some more colors, I didn't realize that. Okay, that's.
Yeah, 13F, yeah.
So we're just addressing again, when we just discussed the zoning review in terms of some areas, making sure that they don't haphazardly put up poles that do not fit the area.
Okay. Okay, well, that's fine. The other question I have is, and I'm definitely in favor of city controlling our right-of-way and getting paid for use of our right-of-way. For example, up at Northwestern and Orchard Lake, there's a cell tower off in the back that looks like a pine tree. And you, I mean, you only know it's a, well, with the casual eye. But when you look at it, it's a pine tree. And I've been told that the Orange Tech sign on Northwestern has a cell tower inside of it. So is the purpose of all this is permit aesthetic for the City of Southfield and to make us sure we are getting our right-of-way fees?
Dawn?
So, okay, so I think Northwestern and 10, I kind of muffled when I was trying to hear your concern about we make sure we're getting our right-of-way fees. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? Because.
Yeah. My major concern is that we are doing things that do the City of Southfield for the use of our right-of-way. Are we covered with what this proposed ordinance will do? And also is it covering the aesthetics of these particular small cells? And also to cover the aesthetics of these particular small cells?
So this is an ordinance, so that we can regulate, make sure we do get the fees that when they are using our right of ways for the small cell facilities, as was shown in the photos. I'm not sure if that answered your question or look more into it. I think I understand what you're saying.
I, I can, I can add maybe that the law that's evolved over the last 30 years with respect to those older cell towers, the, the one like the Lawrence Tech, and I am, I, I'm not familiar. But I know that the city of Southfield has a number of macro cell towers, the old ones, much taller. The law that developed with those has been, it's become more mature, I suppose. And that's where you start to see the requirements of turning it into looking like a pine tree or a sign. The small cell approach, again, by the legislature here and FCC is, well, these are small, quote unquote. And so we don't have to worry too much about that. So we've got a fight on our hands when that comes push to shove. And so what we're trying to do is set you up in the best position possible to have that say and tell them, look, we need you to mask or to camouflage, just like you do those macro towers. They're going to push back and they're going to say, look, we, we don't have to do that because this is so much smaller and less obtrusive. Well, it's also a lot closer to your home or your business or your street, so. Can't hear you.
You have to unmute your laptop.
That's answered my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I have no questions. Thank you. We reviewed this in legislative and all my questions have been answered.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Madam President, Madam President, can I just ask one more question? Do we know if DTE is receiving a fee from a wireless provider if they connect onto the, to the utility pole?
I love that question. Uh, we know, we know that they are receiving a fee. I have tried for several years to find out what that fee is. They will not give it to me unless I have a subpoena in my hands, which I'd love to have. But you know what a subpoena requires? A lawsuit. And so that is one of those very pregnant questions out there that I, I, I know, for instance, that DTE is charging anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 per pole to what they call make ready. Whether it's replacement or otherwise, we're not seeing anything like that at all, not even close. And they are our tenant, subleasing to the wireless. What they're getting per pole per year, I don't know. Um, I need a subpoena and I haven't been given one yet.
Don, I, I just don't understand how we can be getting $20 and we don't know what they're getting.
And that is why I have Mike who, working with Protech and just looking at all the, what can I say, Mike? The inadequacies or the unfairness come inside of towards the wireless providers, um, in some sort. Set those limits as far as the fees for the right of ways, thinking that that's in the best interest, I guess, for the consumer? Is that fair to say, Mike, that?
Oh, I, I suppose they, they would say something like that, Don, but, but I, I, I'm extremely sympathetic to the councilwoman who wants to know because I think it's critical, especially if it turns out that they're getting more as our tenant, their subtenant than we're getting. But again, I, I have asked them for it. I've asked the wireless industry for it. And unfortunately, until I drag them into court and, and have the judge compel it, I cannot get it. I've tried to get it through the Public Service Commission as well. So I have been trying to promote a challenge to this law for some time, ever since it was passed. And I have not had a taker yet because it would be a big expensive fight. But part of that fight would allow me to open the door to, to get to that number and find out what they are getting.
Okay, thank you so much, Mike. You know, Madam President, maybe that's something that we can talk more about offline and maybe, you know, talk with legislative because we, we need to explore that further.
Okay, thank you. Maybe the legislative team and legal, Jason, you and Don, maybe you guys can come up with something and let us know?
That sounds good.
Yeah, and I'd be, I'd be happy to work on that.
Okay. Okay, okay, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. So do, where do we go from here, Don? Do we want to wait till we hear back from legislative or do we need to go ahead and move forward with this? Is this going to be on our consent agenda next week or?
Yes, that is correct, Madam President. Um, this has been something actually that has been around since right before the Public Act in 2018 and then we worked on it this year. And now we have Verizon, AT&amp;T, they are looking to put those small cell facilities on poles already. And we did take it to legislative committee. I had a full discussion with Mr. Watson and saying photos that the board council is looking at this evening. So yes, I would like to move it to the next meeting for approval and introduction so that we will have something in place because these wireless providers are already in the process of filling out their permit applications.
Okay, okay. We can do that and still have legislative and you work on getting us the other information that we need.
Right, right. The other information, um, as, like you said, with board members, with Protech. So that would be a whole separate meeting and issue to really see what it would take. I'm assuming that, as Mike said, it may take some litigation to get subpoenas and I will talk more with him also.
Okay. I, I would just ask that, I would just ask that, that legislative, don't let it fall off of the agenda. That way we, you know, report back to us on a regular basis. And if there's something that the council as a whole can do to support this, maybe to move it forward if there's a bottleneck or something, just let us know. But please keep us informed and, and, and keep the information upfront so that we don't lose sight of it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, our, our next item is the audit service contract. Austin, I believe that's you?
Yes, Madam President. Good evening. How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
I'm wonderful, thank you. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Tonight, we are here to discuss council authorization to seek renewal of our contract with Plant Moran as our independent external auditors. Their extended contract expired with the completion of the FY 2020 audit, which was once again filed on time. And so it's time to look at this again. Southfield or Plant Moran is an expert in the municipal auditing field. They currently have over 500 governmental organization clients nationwide, including 400 of those in Michigan. They are also the second largest auditor of federal program single audit. They are a Southfield-based company. They're headquartered here. They've always been headquartered here. Recently, when they were looking for new facilities, they recommitted to the city and have moved some staff into 3,000 Town Center. Within the next year, actually, I think by the spring of this year, they expect to have 800 staff moved into Town Center. During their tenure with the city, they have been integral in helping us get through many financial and other hurdles, including staff transitions, the Great Recession, and some of the challenges that we've faced in the past and will likely face in the future. They have a very strong knowledge of our industry. And when they couple that with the knowledge that they have of the city, they push us to do better each and every year. And we improve as a result. I do have, or we do have our audit partner, our current audit partner, Alicia Watkins, on the line. And I would like to give her a couple of minutes to say a few words on this as well.
Thank you, Austin. I appreciate it. And good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. I, I do understand that there were some questions or maybe concerns raised regarding our longevity as the auditors for the city of Southfield. And I, I think it's fair and I can appreciate, you know, those questions and observations. As this really is a topic that has long been discussed in our industry and has in fact been studied quite extensively in, in our industry by organizations such as the AICPA, the American Accounting Association and others. And, you know, what they've found frankly is that there really is no evidence that when mandated, auditor rotation actually does improve audit quality. In fact, the AICPA study found the opposite to be the case in that when auditor rotation was required, that it could have unintentional consequences and actually hurt audit quality due to the lack of institutional knowledge and sometimes the lack of expertise by new auditors. Now, that, that being said, I mean, you know, our requirement to maintain independence and objectivity is, you know, it's not just something that's important to Plant Moran, it's something that's absolutely required by our profession. And we do a lot of different things to ensure that we achieve that. And in the interest of time, I'll just highlight one of them, which is that we rotate our audit team regularly, including our team that serve the city of Southfield. So a couple of examples of that. Over the past 10 years, we have had four different lead audit partners. We've had several different managers. Our current manager has only worked on the city's audit for the past three years. And we're already transitioning a new co-auditor in, in Yakov Black. We then are transitioning somebody else new onto the team to take Yakov's old role. In addition, our firm requires an independent review of every single audit file that we issue before it goes out the door. And that's by somebody on our quality control team. And so we do rotate that person year over year as well. That person is not involved in the audit. It's a complete independent and objective review. So those are just the few examples of the ways in which we maintain our independence and objectivity. I, I am absolutely confident that we have not become complacent in the work that we're doing for the city. We're no less objective than when we started working with the city of Southfield. And I really think that the best representation of that or the best evidence of that and maybe even an example of some of the value that we bring to the city is in our end of audit letters that we provide year over year to city council and to the mayor. If you review those for the folks, for the council members who have not, you know, been involved in the finance committee team. But if you, if you would go back and review those and pick any year, frankly, there, there's some tough feedback in there. There really is in terms of opportunities for improvements, areas of concern, you know, some control deficiencies that we've really employed the city to, to address and improve upon. And we've given that type of feedback year over year. We've been able to bring forth those items directly to the council finance and have at length discussions. We have difficult conversations. We provide the opportunity for the tough questions to be asked and discussed between Plant Moran and the governing body directly. It's not in the spirit certainly just to, to be tough on, on the city and your team, but really in the spirit to continue to help the city grow and thrive and, and frankly, to do, do the job that council hires us to do. It's our professional responsibility and it's, it's not something we take lightly. You know, the, the city really is a large and complex organization. You have very unique needs and transactions that, that frankly translate to significant accounting and reporting nuances, I'd say. And so we are, we are unequivocally the, the leader, the lead accounting firm here in the state of Michigan, as Austin mentioned, and we are absolutely best positioned to serve the city. I had here just a bullet point about our commitment to Southfield. Austin already mentioned that, so I, I, I won't reiterate. But we are, we'll just say that we are excited to be maintaining our headquarters in Southfield in the way that we always have, to have our national headquarters here. And at the end of the day, you know, we, we really are invested in the city of Southfield. We have always been invested in the city of Southfield. We truly value our professional relationship. And, you know, we would, we would love to the opportunity to continue to serve as your audit firm. I can, I can promise you that we'll never, you know, we'll never stop working hard to earn your business and we'll never stop bringing fresh ideas and bringing value and bringing critical feedback to your team. So I appreciate the consideration and the time today. And, you know, if deemed appropriate by Council President Taylor, I'd be happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up to Council, Austin, unless you wanted to add something else?
No, I, I'm happy to entertain questions.
Okay, great. Okay, Council, we'll start with you. And Councilwoman Banks?
How long is this proposed recommended contract for, Austin? I do not see it in the write-up.
So we actually don't have a recommendation on a contract right now. We were first coming back to Council to ask if that was something we could do. We, we would like Council's guidance on how we should proceed.
Okay, so basically you're asking whether, you're asking for the okay to proceed forward with Plant Moran? I'm sorry, caught me off guard when you said that.
Yeah, of course, Councilwoman Banks. Yes, we are, we are seeking Council's guidance on how to proceed if we can renew our contract with Plant Moran. And if so, you know, Council can obviously set the parameters on that. We would come back to Council for the ultimate approval on that.
Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn.
Yes.
As we discussed during Council President's meeting, it's the intent and the request is for a minimum of one year. You know, quite frankly, the costs associated with got, with going through an RFP and our ability to do a solid job in this pandemic, it, it's our position that it, it would be very difficult. This is something we'd like to have everyone in the room, at the table, going through and reviewing. So our request is for a minimum of, of one year. And, you know, recognizing this was discussed at the finance committee. There was some concern about the longevity of the contract. And I think as Ms. Watkins has indicated, the checks and balances that are in place by the industry as well as Plant Moran safeguard those interests. But we, we, we would like to request a minimum of, of, of one year. Ideally, you know, two, three years would be great. But at minimum, the administration would, would like one year just to get us through this pandemic.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Zorn. I appreciate it. And when you say one year, I'm sorry, one year from what date? September 23rd, June 30th? There's several dates.
By, by one year, it would clearly mean that they would be covering the next fiscal year audit for the fiscal year that will end June 30th of 21, correct, Austin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell? Okay, we'll come back. Councilman Cruz?
Um, I'm, I'm in full support of us extending another contract to Plant. I would, for the two, with the one, with the possible. But that's just my position. And mostly because I think that when we, you know, just because we can bid this out and things like that, it's not the same type of matter, if you will, than like who's going to cut the grass this year and who's going to shovel the snow. And we look for the lowest bidder per se. When you're dealing with our finances and our audits in particular like this, and I've not seen anything but great work come from Watkins has made herself available to us. And, and the, and the company as a whole has really worked hard for the city and done some good things. And we should trust in, in, in the advice and guidance of our department here. So if Mr. Michaels feels comfortable and recommends that we move forward. So if Mr. Michaels feels comfortable and recommends that we move forward and they're working well together, I think that we should support that move forward as well. That's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. The one thing I didn't hear was the beginning, you were breaking up. Did you say you recommend a two-year or a three-year?
I said a two-year with a third year, with a one-year option afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Brightwell, are you back or?
Yes, I think so. I hope I.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No, I just wanted to make a comment. I'm very comfortable with Plant Moran and I have been since I chaired the finance committee. And the main thing is that, and put it in plain English, English, we work with Plant Moran, we have some very honest discussion. We have, Southfield is a large city. We have some areas that have issues. And we've had honest discussions with Plant Moran where they gave us the pure black and white of how this situation is working. So over the last five years, we've been current with our audit. And before I know that, we've been current. And I think since I've been working with Plant Moran, they have been diligent in making sure that, and that's been the target of the finance committee, making sure we are current and timely with our audits. And they bought into that and we pushed as much as we could from the finance committee. And this whole item, and I will go back to church based on a little bit of what Mr. Cruz indicated. An auditor is not someone that you just hire on a yearly basis. You know, Ford's auditor is around for years. AT&amp;T auditor, Price Waterhouse, who I worked with when I was AT&amp;T, they've been around for years. Now, I think the accounting industry, CPA, they recommend not rotating your auditor as though they were based on the Dallas. Because auditing is a very sophisticated process. And we go out for bonds, I got word last, not this time, but last time we went out for bonds, understood that bond, people who buy our bonds, they would not purchase our bond until our audit was complete. And so it is a very significant part of our existing. And we'll put it in another plain English context. It's about like a doctor, that you have a doctor you feel very comfortable with. You don't change that doctor very easily. And another, I make a take a look at the home taxi, we'd be right around the corner. Most of the hell who have tax repairs, we're not changing that tax repair every season. You know, have some astronomical reason. But otherwise, I'm very comfortable and just from a finance chair standpoint, very comfortable. And I would like to say a three-year or maybe a two-year with the one-year, you know, extension. But a three-year would be, I'd be very comfortable with Plant Moran. And another thing, as some of you know, I'm fairly involved in the community with MLK group and a couple of other groups. And Plant Moran stepped up and supported MLK task force. And they stepped up a couple of years ago when I, and I had a critical request. And MLK had a critical request, a critical moment. Plant Moran stepped in as a corporate citizen. So the main thing of it is that the auditing function and the functioning, the performance of Plant Moran has been stellar. And one other thing, might be someone individual about getting cozy with your auditors. There was a big auditing firm, I didn't work with them years ago, Arthur Henderson. Now, auditors and CPAs, they make their money being honest and doing according to their records. If you, they make too good of a living for them to be, let's say, doing something cozy for Southfield and breaking their code of ethics. Otherwise, they could lose, they could go out of business. You take a whole lot of food off some partner's table by closing down their firm. So that's not an issue with us with respect to being cozy with an auditor. It's being familiar with them, they're being familiar with you still by the standards of their industry. So as not to hamper their ethics and also not to have their firm closed down because they budded up partner, I mean budded up to a client to put out false records. So, Madam Chair, I'm comfortable with a three-year contract with Moran. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. I think I am with Councilman Cruz and Councilman Brightwell on this. I don't see any problem with giving Plant Moran a contract. And I like Councilman Cruz's suggestion about maybe two years with the one-year option. I'd be fine with extending their contract with the city.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I think everyone pretty much knows my opinion on this. But, you know, from what it sounds is that according to Councilman Brightwell, because they help support organizations in the city, we should continue the audit contract with them. And then Councilman Cruz mentioned, well, you know, we should trust the administration and the directors and administration, although I don't see us doing that as a council when other things come that we just take whatever the direction from administration or the directors comes. So I don't know why this case is any different. But I brought this up last time we extended the contract with Plant Moran, that I think that it's time to do an RFP for a new audit company. Now, I understand that you have an auditor, they switch auditors, there's the institutional knowledge. I understand all of that. But at the same time, I also feel that you always get comfortable. We may deal with different auditors, but you always have a lot of the same players from Plant Moran that are overseeing the audits and maybe, you know, have that institutional knowledge or can help the newer auditors that are coming on. There's, to me, I think that this is time to do an RFP to see what other company, there's other Southfield companies that are out there. There's, there may be better pricing. I don't know. And I'm not saying that we always have to go with the lowest price, but I think we've been using Plant Moran for 10 years. I think at this point, I would be, because of the current situation, I am agreeable to a one-year extension on the condition that we do an RFP for the next year after to see what other options are out there for auditing services. That's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, thank you. So for the past five years or so that I've served on the finance committee, I have really come to appreciate the level of professionalism and the quality of Plant Moran's work as well as the honesty that they bring to the city. You know, they've helped us improve our auditing practices and processes. We are now completing our audits on time, as Councilman Brightwell spoke of. And so I really like them as an auditing firm for our city. And I too support the contract extension. I'm going to say a three-year. I do hear Councilman Mandelbaum's words, but, you know, there are a lot of contracts that we have that have been for more than 10 years, that we just use the same providers for things. And so for this one, however, I'm going to have to say that we need to be a little bit more careful and cautious about just throwing up an RFP. When you read some of our audit results and some of the suggestions that Plant Moran has made, they're tough ones, they're tough calls, and they come in and they tell us what we need to do. And I just appreciate the way that they've worked with our finance team. And, you know, I will yield to your suggestion as well, Austin, but I do suggest a three-year contract extension. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I too am in favor of extending the contract for Plant Moran. I, in my former life, was an ISO auditor for manufacturing and I know what's all involved. And I also know that per Serban's Oxlade, we do have to rotate our auditors. I also know that there's a legal compliance that we have to, as an auditing firm, you have to adhere to. And you would not jeopardize that for any client, none whatsoever. And I do know how hard Plant Moran has worked with the city in helping us to improve all of our processes. And when I was on the finance committee, we did a lot of work in accounting and in treasury to bring Southfield up to where it is today. And where we are promoting and putting out a timely, I shouldn't say timely, on-time CAFR report for the last couple of years. So that is a huge improvement. And as was already stated, our bond rating is based on that a lot of times. They will not even consider us for bond rating until our reporting has taken place. So Plant Moran has brought us to this point. And I believe and trust their decisions and their advice. And then they're opening themselves up to not just the finance team, but to all of administration and to this council. They put forth very hard and tough questions. And they open themselves up so that if there's questions or things that we don't understand or questions that we're saying, what could the city do better? They're not shy in telling us, no matter how tough the questions may be, no, how tough the answers may be. So that's what you want from an auditor. You don't want someone that's going to sugarcoat it. You want someone that's going to tell you the hard things. But not only do they point it out, they also help us to improve. They say, here are some things you might want to look at to improve the situation. So I'm in favor of extending that contract as well.
Madam clerk, I'm sorry, not Madam clerk, Madam President. This is Councilman Cruz. May I have just one moment, please?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, because I feel like I was called out momentarily by Councilman Mandelbaum about this. And I totally, I just want to make the record clear that in my statement, that I said that clearly this is a little bit more of a unique type of decision that we have to make in terms of this. Mr. Brightwell made some good analogies in terms of changing doctors and changing auditor, changing your tax person and things for, you know, just for the lowest buck or whatever the case may be. And I do, and I don't recall whether you said I or we don't put faith in our department heads and leaders, but I don't know too many times that I've gone against anything someone suggested. I may have had questions or may have had things that I wanted done a little bit differently. But my faith is always in people that we hire because that's why we hire them. So I don't want you to characterize me any other way than that. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, do you need, what more direction do you need from this council?
It sounds like the consensus of council is to come back with a two to three-year contract for your review and approval?
Yes.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Then that is what I will bring back to council. I will discuss with, I will reach out to Plant Moran and negotiate that and bring it back to council for your review and approval.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Watkins, Happy New Year and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. Take care.
Okay, moving next, our next item, First Amendment agreement to purchase real estate, Contour Acquisition LLC.
Madam Chairwoman, Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn. On the line, we have Alice Sevis, our DDA director, Steve Palms, our attorney for Miller Canfield. And I believe Paul Barberigan is here on behalf of the contours group. This evening, we're asking council for a 60-day extension to the purchase agreement with the contours group relative to Northland. We're also asking to extend the, to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the amendment extending the contract 60 days. Extend the deadline date for any objections to the title, commitment and survey to March 12. Extend, complete the negotiations of the development agreement to March 12. Extend the closing date, which was originally scheduled for January 26 to March 29. Then also to include language regarding the incentive package that the city has discussed relative to the Brownfield and the Brownfield reimbursement agreement. That is, the advancement of 6.8 million to be applied for costs associated with water and sewer pump, sanitary pump stations and 3.8 million towards the demolition. I did speak to a number of council people today and over the weekend regarding this. The city, the contours group now has a half million dollars hard on this project. And we're requesting mayor and city clerk to be authorized to sign a purchase, to sign the amendment to the purchase agreement. Alice Sevis and Steve Palms should be here. If there's anything either of those two gentlemen would like to add?
This is Steve Palms. Thank you, Fred. I think you've outlined the terms that are included in that amendment. And it does include, as you pointed out, the fact that they have made a half million dollar deposit and that entire deposit's become non-refundable and has actually been paid to the city. But I think you've very correctly outlined the terms of that amendment.
And I think council should note that the contours group has done an extensive amount of work. We've had multiple meetings with the state of Michigan. We are attempting to procure the state's commitment via the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and the Michigan Strategic Fund for the education village capture as well as other incentives from the state. Alice, is there anything you want to add or?
Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Yeah, Madam President, Alice Sevis. To Fred's point, the contour group has visited the site a number of times to pursue their environmental review. They recently signed a contract with their environmental company to do some work on the dirt stockpile, which is at the site. They have you, as the council has known, that they have been working with Terry pretty consistently over the last couple of months to get the ODD amendment approved by the council for the development. They've also shared with us on a call on Friday that they have entered into letters of intent with two commercial tenants for lease fees at the project as well as have pursued and increased their internal team dedicated to project by hiring a specific project manager, which, given the complexity of the project, is absolutely necessary. And then lastly, they have engaged an excavating company for the site development work on the site. So as you can see, they have taken some critical steps moving forward. The amount of due diligence on the particular site is enormous. And so we think that 60 months is a start. There may be a need, depending on how things go with the state of Michigan, that another extension come before you. As I've mentioned before in the past, this is one part of the project that the city has no control over. this is one part of the project that the city has no control over and we are sort of at the mercy of the state as far as their timetable. Thank you.
And just for clarification of Mr. Alcivus, you said 60 months, you meant 60 days. Am I correct?
It's right. So we got this particular request for 60 days, which would take it out through March the 12th. My comment also indicated that there may be a need to come back to the council after March 12th if we have not resolved the issue with the economic incentives.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President, as the agreement expires today on March 11th, we are also requesting a Rule 10.
Okay, I will hear from council first and then we'll go to the Rule 10 if everything goes okay. I will start with you, Mr. Brightwell.
Thank you. I have several questions, really. How long has Contour been in this proposed purchase agreement? If we go to March, how many events have been?
This is Steve Palms again. The purchase agreement was signed on October 13th. Contour signed it on the 12th of October. We, the city, signed it on October 13th. There had been discussions prior to that time and there had been a couple of letters that the city provided to Contour to commit to keep the property off the market while Contour investigated. I can't remember the date of that first one, Fred or Paul or Al. You may remember the date of that first letter, but it was some months before that October date. But so it was for a period prior to the date of the execution of this agreement in October, but the formal agreement was signed in October.
Okay, so is it, and I'm just going to recall this, has it been about a year? If we, since we took this off the market for Contour, if we go to March?
My recollection is that that first letter was sometime in March.
Okay, so it'll be about a year. Is anyone, I'm on a professional opinion right now or a common opinion? Is it, no, it's not normal for someone to hold up their property for one year and not allow anyone else to deal with it, right?
A year is a long period of time. This is a complicated project. So that, 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 you know, every project requires candidly a different period of time depending on the complexity of it. You know, the speed with which this could have been done certainly. People can look at it, you know, candidly, in any variety of ways, but it has, it has been a while. There are a lot of incentives required, as Fred mentioned. So it's hard to judge that this could have been. I suppose you could say everything could have happened faster and whether this one could have happened faster, I don't know. You know, one might wonder whether we should have or could have signed a purchase agreement earlier than this to have a formal agreement and, and, you know, collect a deposit for that because I think, as you point out, it does cost us, Fred, you'll know this better than I, there's a cost to the city every month of just maintaining the property, which is significant. So that keeping it, you know, available, we still have to pay, pay that cost. So that, you know, and as, as again Fred noted, there's a half a million deposit that they have made that has been paid to the city. Again, that's a hard question to answer as to whether it could have and should have been done by now. You know, it's, that's tough really to know. This was the period though that Contour asked for. They asked for a 90-day due diligence period. So which candidly, I thought was a bit optimistic, but that is what the period that they had requested. So we were hopeful that they would be able to do it in that period of time. But they've come back and asked for some additional time.
Okay, Steve, I appreciate that. Obviously, I'm not forgetting your time out as the chair and also that said on the Northland Committee. It wanted to request that I know, and I was glad to hear that they finally put down a half million because I was aware that our carrying costs will be eating into that half a million dollars on a monthly basis. Did they ever provide us with their financial statement and/or provide us with a marketing plan?
President, this is Al Alcivus. If I may respond to Councilman Brightwell's question. They, as part of the process that they're engaged in with the state of Michigan, one of the requests that they have is an updated market study.
Excuse me, Al, could someone please, please, please mute your line? It's very, very annoying. Thank you. Go ahead, Al.
Thank you, Madam President. As I was saying, Councilman Brightwell, as part of the interaction with the state of Michigan, they have required an updated market study before they will consider moving it forward and is part of their process. So the last conversation that we've had with Contour is that that market study is almost complete. And I think part of the delay has been obviously the holidays over December. So yes, we are expecting a new market study. It will be furnished to the state and we will have an opportunity to take a look at that. In addition, your questions regarding the financial statement, again, this is a very sophisticated due diligence that the state is going through and they are going to require some form of commitment from a private institution that be delivered to them. And so I'm sure that that institution, whoever it may be, will have the opportunity to review their financial statements and will make a commitment based on the quality of those numbers.
President, this is Administrator Zorn. I'd also like to add, as we were going through this initial process, last March, the contours group was originally only looking at an 11-acre piece. Then it expanded and as we went through that period, they saw the city's, you know, the opportunity here in the city's vision. We did previously see indications from their finance entities regarding letters of credit, but onto more of these parameters of this arrangement are defined, those details are not, few entities would present or make the financial commitment until all of these items are arranged. In particular, the commitment from the state for education commitment, the city's utilization of brownfield incentives, the site plan approval. And the last 90 days have focused on, you know, getting site plan approval, dialogue with the state on incentives. And that's why the beginning, you know, where the city is at least making its commitment of what we discussed regarding these incentives so we can go in with a firmer position with the state. There's still the need to develop a brownfield plan and a brownfield reimbursement agreement, but again, those parameters need to be defined by the state of Michigan as well.
Okay, the next question I have, this will probably be the last question. With respect to the advancement of city money, the 6.8 million and the two-point, I can't remember what the other number was, maybe the 3.8, the advance in those dollars. What guarantee, because, you know, this is, to me, this is coming to a little bit unusual, Contour, we had a lot of requests. In my professional days, I would request financials, marketing study, then we'd make the decision. This is coming to us sideways. Now, we are making advances on paper of 6.8 million, then 3.8. What guarantee will we, will not be losing that money?
Madam President, this is Al Alcivus again. The way that the language is written in your write-up and is, Councilman Brightwell, is that that money is subject to really approval of mostly all of the economic incentives. I'll refer to my write-up here. But it basically indicates that the dollars will not be invested until there is satisfaction of certain conditions, including confirmation from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, as well as approval from them that these funds will be reimbursed through the brownfield redevelopment program. So by that language, the eight, the 6.8 and the 3.8 will come back to the city through the brownfield redevelopment program. So I believe that there's enough coverage to the city that these dollars will not go into the property until certain conditions are met.
Okay, one final question, I promise. If, okay, let's say everything goes as planned. How long we get, how long would it take us to get that money back hypothetically? I just want to get an idea. This is, we're doing a whole lot of things real sideways with Contour. I mean, relative to my understanding of how difficult it is. So how long would it take us to get the money that we advanced? If everything goes normal with respect to Contour and the brownfield and everything else? Just hypothetical, just give me a ballpark. Is it 10 years?
The preliminary estimates are probably 10 to 15 years based on anywhere from three, 3 million to 4 million a year coming back to this site. Again, as you put this type of brownfield plant together, what we need, what we'll need to finalize is the disbursement of those tax increment funds as they come in. And again, these monies are utilizing tax increment and as the funds come in, the city will be paid back. I cited earlier in conversation that, you know, for example, the Spring Haven Development is just completing its tax increment commitments. Now, keep in mind, that project was stalled out for the better part of seven years, but as the taxes are paid, the water fund would be made whole, the 3.8 million, which is part of the project funding would be paid whole. In addition to the 4 million we've previously spent, we'd work to make ourselves whole. But this is a byproduct of the build-out schedule and taxes and what gets negotiated the next 60 days.
And Fred, if I may, I'm Councilman, well, I just want to echo what Al Alcivus indicated. That is that this amendment by itself does not commit to those funds. It indicates that we're discussing the, making those funds available, but it is subject to, you know, continued review and the complete negotiation of this development agreement, which does require significant additional information before those funds are advanced. So this is a statement to the effect that this is what we're considering, but it's subject to, you know, fairly significant due diligence as we continue this process with the state to discuss the incentives, the nature of the incentives, you know, the shortfalls that Contour is attempting to cover. And so that, you know, before that development agreement is signed and agreed upon, all of that information has to be provided and sorted and analyzed before there's actually a signature on the bottom line where we're providing those funds. So this is a kind of a preliminary indicator that this is what we're considering, but it's not a final commitment.
Thank you. Thank you. That's enough for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz.
Mr. Brightwell, I think, well, I mean, kind of covered the gamut there for me and gave me a few more things to think about. I'm okay with the extension. As far as I'm concerned, we'll be okay with doing a Rule 10 this evening. You know, we just have to keep in mind, although this might not be normal in terms of timeframes and so forth, but I was glad to hear that we did, that we do have that half million firm as it relates to at least helping out with carrying costs of the property because that was, that was always a concern of mine. So, you know, I think that, you know, they're acting in good faith and with the state also involved in this, you just don't know what type of timeframes you're going to have to deal with. So I think that we should continue to work with them as our partners and deal, continue to forward and get this done. So I will be in favor of the Rule 10 this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. I just want to just make sure. I mean, part of the reason we want to do the extension is because we are negotiating with the state on incentives. Did I hear that right?
Part of the reason that we're asking, that Contour is asking for this, the Councilman Hopkins, is that they need to finish their inspection period, which is primarily the due diligence. I think the discussions with the MEDC is part of that. But as you can see, they still have some environmental work that needs to be complete. And so by requesting an extension on the inspection, it sort of is a domino effect that requires other parts of the agreement to be extended for the same timeframe.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I think all my questions have been answered. I understand the reasoning why we need an extension. But I'm glad that at least the project is still going forward. So I am in favor of this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you. As Contour, you know, pursues economic incentives for their project, if we do have to grant another extension past March 12, 2021, what kind of economic disincentive will we employ to do that? I mean, are we prepared to ask them for additional fees if we have to go past the March 12th date?
I would have to defer to Fred and what he would seek in terms of a next extension, but I will say that additional deposits are commonly requested or required in connection with extensions. But again, you know, Fred, I don't know if you've had discussions on that topic. I don't know that we've really, I haven't been involved in too many conversations about an extension beyond this next 60 days.
I've not had that conversation, but for council's knowledge, we originally did have a discussion about additional funds, but we backed off on that as the company in doing additional soils testing on the dirt that's been stockpiled there as it exceeds 100, it's, the figure's $106,500. And we did toy with an additional $100,000, but as that expense came up, we backed off on that. The purchase agreement does provide that all reports will be shared with us. So we'll own that work product. But council should note that that was part, it was part- But counsel should note that that was part, it was part of what was originally discussed on this, and we backed off as we're wrestling with the dirt that's been stockpiled on the site. But future extensions would certainly have those considerations brought forward.
Thank you, Fred. I mean, I'm no longer on the Northland Committee, so I just, you know, whichever one of my colleagues are on there now, I just please ask you to make note of that, that that needs to be something that you guys discuss. The, when, have we received the incentive development agreement? Was that shared with the Northland Committee?
Counselman, yes, we have not received it yet because that is part of the process and engagement with the state of Michigan. So that is still a product that is working process.
Okay, yes, okay. Al, I want to make sure that we get that for the counsel to be able to review that as soon as you have that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Before the closing, the counsel will have the ability to look at the purchase agreement, including both the site plan agreement as well as the incentive agreement.
And then when do you project that the Brownfield Development Plan will be completed?
Part of that is part and parcel of where the state is coming in at. So the state's process, just so that I can provide a visual for the counsel, is they have a number of layers that one has to go through. And we unfortunately started at the very first level where we are making an introduction to an individual, discussing vital points. Once he is comfortable with that process, he then moves it into his boss, if you will, who is, let's say, the head of the community development. There's another process and review that goes on at that level. If it is approved at that level, then it goes into a committee. If the committee approves it, then it goes into and forward to the Michigan Strategic Fund. So, you know, we're looking at several levels that we have to go through. But we're still in that, I'd say, one and a half between the first level and the second level. And, you know, I think unfortunately, the holidays slowed the process down a little bit. But my understanding, Fred's understanding, based on discussions with Contour Friday, is that they're re-engaging and moving it forward.
Okay, thank you. No further comments or questions from me.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks.
I think all my questions have been answered. I'm ready to move forward with immediate need to act on the item, thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then counsel, I need a motion for Rule 10.
Madam President, I'd like to move for immediate need to act on First Amendment Agreement to Purchase Real Estate with Contour Acquisition LLC. This is Counselman Cruz.
I think I first have to have a motion for the Rule 10, and then we'll go for the approval.
I thought that's one of them.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please forgive me, counselman.
No problem.
Councilwoman Banks, I support it.
Okay, it's been motioned by Counselman Cruz and seconded by Councilwoman Banks for the immediate need to act for Rule 10. Clerk, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Brightwell.
Yes, yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Rule 10 adopted.
Madam President, I'd like to make the proposed First Amendment Agreement to Purchase for purchase of real estate with Contour Acquisitions LLC for the 60-day extension.
Councilwoman Banks, support.
Thank you, it's been motioned by Counselman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks for approval of the extension of 60 days. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Brightwell.
Yes.
First Amendment Agreement to Purchase Real Estate for Contour Acquisitions LLC has been adopted.
Thank you. All right. Our next item, I'm sorry, was someone going to say something?
No, I was just to thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is the roof replacement for Beachwoods Parks and Rec Golf Pro Shop.
Thank you, good evening, counsel. On November 25, 2019, counsel did approve contracting with Weather Seal to replace the Beachwoods Golf Pro Shop roof for $14,215. Aside from the normal delays of getting contracts signed, there was an initial delay regarding some ventilation equipment on the roof. Whether it was going to stay or go, that depended on the kitchen state or go, that depended on what happened with the park. So as you can see, there was a delay there. And once that was done, then COVID came along, the contractor couldn't work, and facility maintenance was concentrating on life safety improvements. Now that we are ready to move forward, the contract reported an $813 cost increase. We did check with the second low bidder, and he suffered a similar cost increase, so this is still the low bidder. And we confirmed internally that the estimated cost increase is reasonable based on supply costs. So we request counsel approve the contract with amended price of $15,028.70. We also request that counsel include a contingency fee amount because initially there was none, but the contract did include a common clause in contract for roof replacement that if any of the sheeting is found to be rotted, that there would be a cost per sheet to replace. And I know that roof is spongy in some areas, so there may be some replacement needed. Furthermore, we are requesting that this be removed from the building authority supervision. This is a shingle roof, a little larger, but basically the shingle roof that most of us have on our homes. It does not require holding meetings and building authority oversight for this sort of project. Facility maintenance can oversee this without any difficulties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will now open it up to counsel. I will start with you, Counselman Cruz.
Questions on my end, sounds good.
Thank you. Counselman Hoskins.
No questions for me on this, thank you.
Counselman Mandelbaum.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Morris.
No questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Banks.
No questions, thank you.
And Counselman Brightwell.
Nope, no questions.
Okay, thank you. So we will move this forward to the consent agenda for next week.
Thank you, counsel president, thank you, counsel.
Our next item is the presentation and discussion regarding the special use request for Southfield Industrial Park located at 21315 Telegraph Road. I believe this is planning.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Happy New Year to everyone. We go to the next slide, please. Next slide.
Yes, the petitioner is Southfield Industrial Park on behalf of the owner, Telegraph Mobile Home Park. This is an approximately 16-acre parcel on the west side of Telegraph, just north of Eight Mile. This was previously a mobile home park as well as a concrete crushing facility. And the petitioner is seeking the following permitted in special land uses. permitted would be outdoor storage with, as an accessory to multi-story indoor mini storage, retail, fast food restaurants with drive-through. Next slide. The site is relatively vacant. There is an older strip center, retail, fronting Telegraph Road with some outside storage of some trailers and units currently. Next slide. It is zoned industrial, and the future land use includes technology corridor is associated with the lower Telegraph Road. Next slide. This is the existing retail center that I referenced that's fronting Eight Mile, excuse me, Telegraph Road near Eight Mile. Next slide. And this is a long-term master plan development for the entire 16 acres. The middle building on the north portion of the property is a four-story, a multi-unit interior storage facility with first-floor retail and office, including recreational vehicle and other vehicles, outside storage towards the rear. Phase two, which is closest to Telegraph Road, will include possibly a fast food restaurant as well as a three- or four-unit retail establishment with end cap drive-through. And then future phases on the southern part of the site may include light industrial or industrial uses. But in the short term, it may be used for outside storage of recreational vehicles and other similar types of vehicles. Next slide. This is a close-up of the proposed three-story multi-tenant building in Phase One, and then the future commercial phase adjacent to Telegraph Road. Next slide. And this shows conceptually what Phase Two may look like in the future. Next slide. This is a proposed rendering of the multi-story interior storage unit with some exterior access on the rear, north and south of the property. The east side of the property would have storefrontage. Next slide. This is a rendering showing the amount of green space versus developed space in Phases One. Next slide. And this is a close-up of Phase One. The, once the multi-story, multi-unit building is constructed, the retail center in the front would be demolished and removed until the market dictates the construction of the fast food restaurant possibly and retail center. Next slide. We do have Mr. Eric Williams and Kevin Heffernan, I believe, from Stone Bridge Engineering. They may want to make a few comments and then we'd be happy to open it up to questions. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Eric and his team.
Okay, that's fine.
Eric, you need to answer. Okay.
Can you answer me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I apologize. Good evening, council members. Eric Williams with Stonefield Engineering Design. My address is 607 Shelby Street, Detroit, Michigan. We are here tonight seeking special land use approval, as Terry had mentioned, for the property located at 21321 Telegraph Road. As he mentioned, we are looking in our first phase of construction to build a three-story mixed-use building that'll total right around 128,000 gross square feet. Looking to have first-floor retail facing Telegraph Road. There will be second-floor office use, and then the balance of the building will be the indoor storage. The site today is approximately 16 acres, is all zoned, I-1 industrial. And then the two acres fronting Telegraph, as Terry mentioned, does contain the existing retail center. With that being said, the landscaping will all be brought into ordinance compliance along with site lighting. There will be 243 parking spaces in Phase One, or 242 are required. Bike parking and pedestrian connections will be proposed throughout. And obviously, as Terry showed, there will be a future phase for the retail fronting Telegraph, and that is conceptual in nature, but the intent is to obviously provide walkways, bike parking, and to connect the entire development. The northwest corner of the site, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure who's controlling this, but if we can zoom out maybe to the overall view?
Thank you.
This will work, perfect, thank you. So all the way to the west, we do have a detention pond that is sized to accommodate the entire property at a later date when it's fully developed. And that's, the intent is to construct that in the first phase. And then in the southwest corner, this was a, or this is a wetland area and contains the 100-year floodplain as it's mapped by FEMA, so that will be maintained as it sits today. And I think, I just want to make sure that there's no misnomers in terms of overall phasing. You know, this particular view here shows what is Phase One. And, you know, the future phases are all going to be market-driven, whether that is the retail that comes first, or, you know, if an industrial user does look for a portion of, you know, either south of the Phase One building or to the west, obviously, the goal is to develop the site, not to leave it as outdoor storage. With that, I believe Richie Atu is on the line as well. Not sure if he has anything to add, but would be happy to answer any questions.
Just to say thank you to the council members for hearing our request. And if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And Madam Chair, before you go to the council, I just want to reiterate that this is for discussion purposes only. Tonight, it will be coming back at your January 25 meeting for a public hearing to consider special land use. You will only be considering approving the special land uses as a non-manufacturing use for the property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I'll now open it up, and I'll start with you, Counselman Hoskins.
Thank you. No, no questions for me on this one. Thank you.
Counselman Mandelbaum. Okay, we'll come back. Councilwoman Morris.
Yes, thank you. This question is for you, Mr. Crowe. Would this be our second construction of like a combo storage facility with another retail? I think we have one on Southfield Road.
That's correct. The one that you're indicating on Southfield Road was an overlay development district. In this particular case, because it's industrial, the storage part of it is permitted use. It's the mixed-use component of it that they require special land use.
Okay, that was my next question, but, okay, great. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, the retail stores, I believe in front of this project on Telegraph Road, there's a party store, I believe, there, and what other retail businesses are there?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Richie Atu to talk about existing. But I can tell you that proposed, again, market-driven, would possibly be a fast-food retail establishment with an end cap that could possibly be a coffee shop and then some other interior retail uses in the future.
No, I want to, no, I guess my question is, what is presently there?
Okay, Mr. Atu.
Yes, currently, there's a party store and some kind of a, whether it's a hair salon or a nail salon combined. And then there's a vacancy. I'm not exactly sure what the third tenant is, but that entire building is planned to be demolished when the new building is constructed. So some of those tenants may relocate into the new facility or not. So some of those tenants may relocate into the new facility or not.
Okay, so the first, the first-floor retail in the new three-story building, these tenants may have an opportunity to relocate there?
Yes.
Okay.
And there'll be, one of the tenants for sure will be, you know, the retail portion of the storage operation. And then the others will be, you know, possibly relocation of existing or new tenants, whether they're related to the facility or not. It just depends on the market.
Okay, and then in front of the the proposed first phase, there's going to be another building? Or am I looking at this plan wrong? Like the second phase?
Through the chair. The future phase, again, market-driven.
Thank you.
One, one, one-and-a-half-story retail center. It could accommodate anywhere from two to four units with an end-cap drive-through and possibly a freestanding drive-through business. So again, all market-driven, but what they're asking for is to at least allow those potential uses should the demand come in. And then we would review them internally for site plan compliance at a later date.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you very much. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Thank you. And Councilman Cruz?
No questions. I wait till the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, hearing nothing else. Terry, this can be moved to the 25th for the public hearing?
Yep, thank you very much. Okay, our next, our next.
Thank you, all members.
Our next planning item is a rezoning request of Mr. Ari Liebowitz. Properties located at 29355 Northwestern Highway. And the proposal is to rezone approximately five acres of land from R2 Single Family Residential and Parking to B3 General Business with a recommend planning to include a 50-foot-wide parking buffer along the common property line with Pilot's Cove condominiums. Next slide, please. And if you, if you may be familiar with the property immediately to the west and south, this is the large parcel that was rezoned to B3 or the I-Gulf that council approved. So that's kind of leading the owner to be proactive to rezone the southern portion of his property from residential to B3. Next slide, please. And the future land use supports the rezoning to B3. Next slide. This is the existing zoning. So you see that he has a large swath of vehicular parking and then R2, which was compatible previously with the I-Gulf parcel, but since that's been rezoned to B3, that residential has become an island in itself. Next slide. And Mr. Liebowitz would like to square off his property with the remaining B3. And then consistent with the vehicular buffer that we have on other properties adjacent to Northwestern Highway, we have recommended a 50-foot vehicular parking zone adjacent to the residential multifamily complex to provide, to prevent a building being built right up adjacent to their property. Next slide. So with that, I believe it's on Mr. Liebowitz. If you could go back one slide window. Mr. Liebowitz was on the call if he wanted to make any comments. This is discussion purposes only, which would come back on January 25 for a public hearing. And with your permission, Madam Chair, Mr. Liebowitz. Liebowitz, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, I'm available to answer any questions. But I rest to the council.
Okay, thank you. Council, I'll start with you, Councilman Ari Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Sorry about before, I was having trouble with my computer.
Okay.
I don't have any problems with this. You know, I think it's being proactive and it's, it fits in, so I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
No questions.
Thank you. And Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we can move this to January 25.
Yep, thank you. Next slide.
Next.
As you recall, a few months ago, planning presented to council some of the challenges we're having with small-box discount retail. You directed us to look into this. We established a six-month or 180-day moratorium. We are back here tonight to present preliminary findings. And if there is a consensus with council after our discussion tonight, we will take it through our 90-day public review, public hearing process. It'll come back to council for your consideration of an adoption of the amendment prior to the six months. With that, I'd like to turn this over to Assistant City Planner Sarah Malali to just give an overview of what we're proposing with regard to regulating small-box discount retail. Thank you.
Okay, whenever you're ready, Sarah.
I see her on the line, but let's see if I can get her over here. If not, I'll I'll just introduce that we've provided a definition of what small-box retail is. And we've regulated to approximately 5,000 to 15,000 square feet. That does not, this would not inhibit any small mom-and-pop-type stores. During our research, we found that the city currently has 16 such stores, three to four concentrations within the area. And the perception, when you have a couple of the small-box retails within a certain area, is that it gives a negative perception of the area. It reduces viability of traditional grocery stores offering fresh food options. Next slide.
Can you hear me yet?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I was having technical difficulties with my computer.
I was just introducing it.
Yes, I was on the whole time. I'm so sorry. I apologize, Madam President and council members. I was frantically messing with my computer, trying to get my microphone to work. So yeah, as Terry introduced, you know, we're looking at, you know, incorporating some of these changes for the small-box discount stores. So defining these small-box discount retail stores as any discount store with a floor area ranging from 5,000 to 15,000 square feet, which offer primarily discounted goods, but do not encompass some of the more specialty stores that might offer meat and seafood, cheese and specialty products like that. And would also not include pharmacies or any sort of gas convenience retail stores. So the small-box discount stores would also include any store that has less than 15% of their floor area or shelf space devoted to fresh fruits and vegetables. So we are looking to, or we would be proposing to allow these types of uses only with special land use in any zone that permits retail currently within the zoning ordinance. And we are also looking at instilling some separation requirements between, between stores. So they would not be able to be closer, they'd have to be at least one mile apart from store to store. We are looking to add hours of operation of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And basically then, any small-box retail location that would be approved prior to this and could not meet these requirements would be considered legal non-conforming use. So, you know, the reason being for, with our, within our research, we've noted that the city of Southfield currently has 16 of these discount retail stores. And we've actually identified three different areas or three pockets within the city that have two to three of these stores either within the same shopping center, next door, or across the street from one another. So, and we've noted that, you know, there could be several unintended consequences resulting from the high concentration of these types of stores, such as, you know, reduce viability of the traditional grocery stores that would be able to offer fresh food options. And it also may contribute to a negative perception of a specific area. So you may recall also, we've had other regulations incorporated into the ordinance for other types of uses like alternative financial services, check cashing and smoking lounges. So this would kind of be similar in nature to just providing some additional regulations and imposing some separation requirements. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. Great presentation. Terry, did you have anything else or should I just go right to council?
Yeah, you can go to council. And again, we're just looking for consensus to move forward. We would bring this through the process and come back to council for your adoption.
Okay. I'll start with you, Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation this evening and the parameters, some of the parameters that you defined. I would like to take it one step further, though. I think 16 of these type stores in our city is way too many. The more we increase these types of stores, the more we find ourselves at risk for creating food deserts in our, in our, in our city. So I want us to talk about coming with some kind of defined number on, or limitation, like we have done with the other types of services that you spoke of earlier this evening. Those are my comments.
Okay, we will, we will work with our city attorney and see if we can come up with a defensible amount based on population or otherwise. But that was a good, good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, Terry. As the, you know, the finance committee, I'm interested in improving our bond rating. What type of demographic? And I've had some anecdotal info about our bond rating. Things that are hampering on us. But what is the, just generically, what are the demographics that these stores are looking for?
I, we can certainly find a detailed demographic, but they tend to target lower-income people because of the price point that they're providing. Although, I didn't want to just make a broad generalization because I know people of all incomes are always looking for price and economies of scale. But the thing that we see in larger metropolitan cities throughout the country, as Morris had indicated, is they can create food deserts and limit the ability of fresh foods and vegetables because they kind of corner the market. Fortunately, we have still a number of larger grocery stores and chains that are in our community. But there is always the possibility that these can become predatory in nature with regards to muscling out the smaller, smaller stores. So we are aware of that. We are continuing to do our research. We think we have a good framework for moving forward. And those comments that everyone's given us is very helpful. Mr. Brightwell, you're still on mute.
Okay. Well, I would like to see that because a part of the bond rating, you'd be surprised at what they take a look at. Now I just want to see what's attracting these stores to Southfield. And because eventually it will pop up during our bond rating meetings about some things. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes. Free with, totally with Councilwoman Morris on this. So that was all that I was going to say, the exact same thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No, thank you. No, no questions for me on this one.
Thank you. And Councilman Mandelbaum?
There we go, sorry. I actually have an agreement with Councilman Cruz and Councilwoman Morris as well.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Terry, we can refer this back to you and, I don't know, what's the next steps?
Well, we will, we will take it formally through Planning Commission, Public Hearing Recommendation, bring it back to council.
Okay.
In the meantime, we will investigate possibly putting a limit on these numbers throughout the city. We will look at demographics that they target. And we will also do an analysis of if these were put in place with a one-mile separation, how many other potential locations there could be. So we will do all of that over the course of the next 90 days prior to us bringing it back for your final consideration after a public hearing. But good feedback tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving to our next item. Terry, I believe that's you too?
Yep, this is, I believe, we've got two more items here. This is simply authorization from council to provide a notice of intent that we are updating our comprehensive master plan. As council may recall, the last master plan was adopted in June of 2016. It will be five years this spring. And we are beginning the process of updating the master plan. This will not be a page to cover to back update, but we will be focusing on trends, issues, conditions in light of pandemic, social injustice, other mandatory land use and planning policies. We have put together a robust schedule with the intent of possibly having this adopted in June or July. We have a webpage and social media that we're going to be launching after your approval. But the State Planning Enabling Act require us to notify all adjacent communities, all registered utilities, regional authorities and others that were beginning the master plan process, that here's the contact information. Give them the opportunity to receive information digitally and then allows us to start with the process of a public input, public hearing over the next couple of months. This will be on your consent agenda next, next meeting. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this point.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll be moving this forward to the consent agenda. The next item?
So if you recall, it's early part of the pandemic last year when the governor and the state put restrictions on indoor eating establishments. Council was proactive to provide temporary relief to restaurants, barbers, stylists, nail salons to permit outdoor expansion of dining areas and exterior grooming stations to parking lots due to COVID-19. of dining areas and exterior grooming stations to parking lots due to COVID-19. We reduced our fee schedule, we expediated our review process, cannot supersede any state requirements. They have to apply annually from what we established was April 1st through October 31st last year. They need to meet all state barrier free and federal ADA requirements, hours of operation, and then they're subject to our local building and fire code. And again, if we had a crystal ball, when we were proactive with these regulations back in early spring of last year, we anticipated that food establishments would be having outdoor seating through October 31st, and then weather, winter conditions and other things would hit. And we found out that we had a very mild November, several very warm days, and even in through December. And we went through a second surge of COVID-19 with the second restrictions mandated by the Health Department, and the restaurants and the businesses were constantly calling us, asking for more relief. Since we put a time period of April 1st through October each calendar year, we were outside those time permits, and the only relief for temporary outside seating was to go through the zoning board of appeals, which requires at least a six-week scheduling, do the public hearing, and those temporary outdoor seating are only good for one year with a one-year renewal. So we're asking counsel to consider tonight is retroactively approving outdoor temporary seating with all host of 20 conditions from November 1st of 2020 through March 31st of this year, and then it picks up April 1st through October 31st, which would been a renewal from what we established last year. To make things simple, so we don't have to do this again, I'm asking counsel to consider just retroactively approving from November 1st through October 31st of 2021. And since there's an urgency, if counsel so desires to move forward, I'm asking for immediate need to act and have a rule 10 approval tonight extending this temporary outdoor seating. It is, again, only permitted while this pandemic is taking place with many safeguards in place, but businesses are really hurting. They have outdoor eating elements, tents, and others. Accessories are available for funding through the county, and I believe Ms. Freeman will be speaking to that later. This is just one small way we can be proactive to help our our local businesses. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I will defer to you for all the questions, and I will start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
I'm absolutely in favor of it. Whatever we can do to help our small businesses, yes.
Okay. Councilman Brightwell?
Terry, um, with with so many changes coming out of the state, it's hard. Whenever the governor makes a presentation, something changes. There's, I'm in favor of helping our business. Does this conflict with anything that that the state has out there now?
Not, not, not that I'm aware of, because the limitations are based on interior seating capacity, and and it does not, uh, it does, let me just put it this way, the limitations of outdoor galleries and seedings is much broader and greater than it is for indoor. So this would certainly allow outdoor business or businesses to expand, expand their business outdoors in addition to the traditional takeout and drive-up services that they're providing just to limp through this pandemic.
I'm in favor. I just wanted to realize we have bumping heads with the state. Okay, thank you. That's good for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Totally in favor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Yeah, I am also definitely in favor of doing this, and definitely need to make sure we're helping our small, our small businesses here in Southfield, so absolutely support this.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm also in favor of this. I think this is something that we should be doing. The only thing I would ask, and there's no, no relation to what Terry is asking, but is it possible to put a list of all these businesses on maybe the city's website that offer outdoor seating options so everyone can know, you know, what options are available in the city, and that should maybe also help some of the businesses as well? So.
I, I do, if I could, since Councilman Mandelbaum brought that up, I do want to make a distinction that we do have certain businesses that have approved outdoor seating, plazas or earth areas. This would allow additional outdoor seating. For example, they could porten off some parking spaces or additional outdoor seating. So this is above and beyond those businesses that currently have outdoor seating areas that were approved through previous site plan approvals. And I certainly, if our community relations would like to work with planning and business development, I'm sure we could put a list together for publication on the city's website.
We can include all the businesses that have any outdoor seating options. It doesn't have to be just for the temporary ones. So I'm, I, but either, either way, I'm, I'm okay with extending this as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you. Yes, I, I am in support. No, no further comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we can move this on?
What I'm asking, is immediate need to act and then approval of the parameters that have been outlined.
Okay. Counsel?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a rule 10 for extending the temporary approval for outdoor dining spaces.
Support. This is Councilwoman Morris.
Okay. It's been motioned by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilwoman Morris that we have an immediate need to act. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Rule 10 adopted?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the temporary approval for the outdoor dining and personal service stations as requested from the Planning Department.
Support.
Okay, it's been motioned by Councilman Mandelbaum and supported by Councilwoman Morris for the approval of the temporary approval for the outdoor dining as been presented. Again, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz? Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Approval regarding the extending for outdoor dining spaces and personal service stations.
Thank you very much, counsel. That concludes the items for tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Crowe. Our next item, I believe, is yours, Mr. Zorn, for the participation in Oakland County Rapid Response.
Yes, Madam President, Rochelle Freeman, our Business Development Director, is, is on, and it follows outdoor dining and a request from Oakland County to authorize a rule 10. We're also requesting permission for the mayor and city clerk to execute the interlocal agreement with the county. Rochelle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Zorn. Oakland County notified the city of Southfield that we are to be receiving a portion of the $3 million that was dedicated to the Rapid Response program to support restaurants, bars, and cafes. This assistance is coming in two forms. One, they identified some reopening supplies that they asked us to help get out to some of our businesses that are currently in operation with outside dining. The second form is to help restaurants and bars to adapt their facilities or to help reimburse restaurants that have already started or are providing outside dining. As Terry mentioned, we do have several restaurants that had been approved through their site plan that enables them to offer outside dining. These restaurants had moved forward with adapting to create an environment so that they continue their restaurant operations. Others are looking to move forward with Terry's plans and the Planning Department, working with the Planning Department, to make adaptations to enable them to provide the outside dining. The first phase, we focused on providing some propane tanks, some cordless hand sprayers and disinfectant to a few of our existing businesses that met the qualifications through planning and building, and we were able to get them some supplies. The second phase of the program will be funds that will be directed to the city that we will be able to reimburse to the business community. The plans have not been defined clearly by Oakland County yet, so we're still working with them to figure out what the application's going to look like in order to reimburse these businesses. However, we will be making a commitment to the county that whatever we're reimbursing will have met the state and the, the requirements in terms of our city ordinances and regulations. So we, we will not be reimbursing any restaurant facility that is not meeting our existing codes. So as Mr. Zorn mentioned, we are looking for a rule 10 to enable us to move forward with this program. And again, once we get the, um, the interlocal agreement to have the mayor and city council, the city clerk approve it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we'll start with you, Mr. Brightwell?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I have no questions either.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, no questions. And again, anything we can do to help Southfield businesses, I'm all in favor for, so thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me. I support our participation in this grant.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
Um, no questions. I'm totally in favor of this grant to help our businesses. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, we need a rule 10?
Councilwoman Banks, um, I move a rule 10 that we authorize the city to participate in Oakland County Rapid Response for City Village and Township Grant Program to support restaurants, bars, and cafes during COVID-19.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for immediate need to act. Counsel, I mean, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
A rule 10 adopted? Thank you. Counsel?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we authorize the city to participate in Oakland County Rapid Response for City Village and Township Grant Program to support restaurants, bars, and cafes during COVID-19.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the authorization to participate in the Oakland County Rapid Response. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
A rule 10 adopted? Thank you. Counsel?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we authorize the city to participate in Oakland County Rapid Response for City Village and Township Grant Program to support restaurants, bars, and cafes during COVID-19.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the authorization to participate in the Oakland County Rapid Response. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
A rule 10 adopted? Thank you. Counsel?
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we authorize the city to participate in Oakland County Rapid Response for City Village and Township Grant Program to support restaurants, bars, and cafes during COVID-19.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next, well, actually, the next three are all similar.
They belong to Lisa Strasky from the Oakland County Michigan Works, and she is on the line to go over those three items.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Lisa Strasky, the manager of the Michigan Works office. The first item is for acceptance of the Wagner Peiser Grant. This grant is in the amount of $325,450, and that is for employment services. Item number 12 is for the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act grants. That is for the Adult Dislocater, Dislocated Worker and Youth Grant in the amount of $813,078. And then item 13 is for our PATH Program Partnership Accountability Training Hope Grant, and that is in the amount of $320,000. We're looking to have all of these placed on the consent agenda for January 19th.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we'll start with, um, with Mr. Cruz. Councilman Cruz?
Support it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no, no questions for me on this.
Okay. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
I'm in support. No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Okay. These can all three move to the consent agenda for next week.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Our next item is the Establishment of Commercial Rehabilitation District, PA 210 of 2005 as amended, for 23800 Northwestern Highway.
Yes, Madam President, this is Rochelle Freeman, once again, and I have DeeDee Kleiner from DDK Acquisitions who will also join me. We received a request from DDK Acquisitions for us to assist with a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property located at 23800 Northwestern Highway, also known as Presidential West. This property, we're looking to set a public hearing for January 25th, and I'd like to ask Mr. Kleiner to give a short presentation on his request.
Hi, and good evening. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
I believe that there's a PowerPoint?
Yes.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, well, firstly, I thank you, Madam President and council members. I appreciate all the efforts you put in for the city of Southfield. As a Southfield resident, I see a lot of change, and I really appreciate it, in particular my neighborhood with Lee Schultz and the Engineering Department, with all the roads that were recently redone. We, it's been a real, it's been a real pleasure to, to walk and drive, so thank you so much for that. This property, 23800 Northwestern Highway, recently purchased, it has been a, it's a commercial office building which has been vacant for a number of years, roughly seven, eight years, and it's been on the market for some time. We've been trying to acquire it and, and put a plan together. Took a number of months, but it finally came together. The building is sitting on the corner, so I'll go through this, I'll go through the PowerPoint. And the, we're looking, we're looking to get a Public Act 210 in order to help achieve the rehabilitation of the property and, and save on the cost while renovating it. The property location, the next slide. Uh, the, the property is currently located in Mount Vernon and Northwestern Highway, which is in between Southfield Road and Northwestern. It sits on Northwestern Highway and right close by to Southfield Road and 696. It sits on Northwestern Highway and right close by the Southfield Road and 696. If you can go to the next slide, please. The property is a two-story, 100,000 square foot office building, built in 1978. It was actually built, actually, originally for what was previously ATT's name, Atlantic, I think Bell Atlantic or something of that nature. It's located in the intersection of Northwestern and Northwestern Highway and Mount Vernon. It's primarily commercial business area along the Northwestern corridor. The building has been vacant and neglected for a number of years, and it's in desperate need of rehabilitation. If you can go to the next slide, please. This is a picture of the front of the building, and the next slide. This is a picture of the lobby from just the current condition and the rear of the building. You can see that it's been, the trees are overgrown all over the place. It's been neglected on the exterior and obviously in the interior as well. Next slide, please. The property is currently vacant, and it's been vacant for a number of years. More recently, in the summer, the water pipe leading from the city to the building burst and caused a lot of damage to the first floor mainly. Throughout, as you can see in the previous picture in the lobby, all the drywall. If you just go back to the slide before for a moment, you could see in the, in the picture of the lobby, all the, half the drywall is removed. That's like that throughout the first floor of the building. You can go back to the next slide. Thank you. There's currently, you know, about 14 areas of the roof which are currently leaking. There's, the, the air conditioning systems are needed to be completely replaced. Sitting vacant, obviously, it's a recipe for vandalism. You know, it's, it's in a private area on the corner, so it attracts, it could attract a lot of things we're not looking for. On the Northwestern corridor, obviously, throughout Southfield, the Northwestern Highway is full of office buildings. But in this area in particular, it's, it's been somewhat not developed that much. And this property, being a large property that it is, with the renovations and rehabilitation of it, I think will bring up a lot, a lot of traction to that area. Next slide, please. So the building hasn't been updated in many years, which I mentioned. The water pipe which burst, obviously, is ongoing damage to the building and needs to be repaired. The elevator, the mechanicals are not operational, and they're all in need of repairs or replacement. Our goal is to create a work environment for the businesses that would come there that would be attractive. So we're looking to create amenities in the building, create a really modern space that would attract businesses. We plan to put in at least $2 million of that building. That's a minimum projection on this project. And we have a tenant lined up for about 25% of the space. It's a large user who would be bringing roughly, you'll see later on in the, in the slide, but it'll be bringing roughly a couple hundred jobs to the city of Southfield, should they be able to take space in this building. Next slide, please. Some of the areas of repair or renovations that are needed. The landscaping, the parking lot is in, most of the parking lot is in need of complete replacement, some of it in repair. Exterior lighting is all damaged, and, and, you know, that has to go, go along with the parking lot. Roof repairs, mechanical repairs, the HVAC systems, the heating systems. The bathrooms need updating. The first floor bathrooms are completely removed at this point, actually. The second floor bathrooms, although they're in working order, are extremely dated. All the flooring of the first floor has been completely removed, so it needs new flooring. And the second floor, although it does have flooring, a lot of it is damaged from, you know, from the roof that's been leaking. The elevator needs to be repaired. The lobby needs extensive renovations. We intend to try to make this building as efficient as possible, including LED lighting and any we're in communication with DT Energy to try to come up with any other green options that there are. And we're gonna obviously be renovating all the common area space of the building, and the actual tenant space, as the tenants come in, we'll be doing those spaces. Next slide, please. So, the, the benefits to the city. So, right now, the building is, is currently at a certain assessed value. We will stay at that assessed value, and we will pay the current rate that is, that the city assessor decides is appropriate. And our goal is to freeze that amount until the building, you know, we're requesting five years, until the building has a tenant base. And then, at that point, once the free, it unfreezes, obviously, the city will then be able to get the increased revenue based on the building producing with the increase in tenancy. Revitalizing that, that building, that particular area would be extremely beneficial to the area. It's sitting on the corner of Northwestern Highway and Mount Vernon. The area on Northwestern, that particular spot, could use a new life, I think, and would be very helpful to businesses in Southfield. By creating this, this renovation rehabilitation, if you can go to the next slide, please, I'm sorry. We expect that north of 200 jobs will be created in Southfield due to this. Particularly, the, the tenant that, that we have lined up would be having more than 200 employees in their location. And it'd be many more, assuming that the building gets fully occupied, or, you know, even 50% would be more than that. We, we expect that there'll be at least 20 jobs retained, because the, the business that we're working with right now is located in Southfield, but they're currently looking at many locations, including Crown Point and Oak Park. And if we were to keep them here, then obviously, those jobs would stay in Southfield. We expect that at least 15 jobs would be created during the construction phase of this project. And the next slide is, obviously, thank you very much, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to add that currently, we are receiving approximately $18,000 in taxes on this property. And meeting with our city assessor, Mr. Radcliffe, it's anticipated that that number will continue during this timeframe. So, we have been working with the city assessor on this request.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. Okay, council, if you have any questions, I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell? Okay, Councilman Cruz?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
No questions. Thank you.
And Councilman Brightwell? Okay.
Madam President, this is Ken Cyber. I have a question for the petitioner.
Yes, hi.
My concern is about the parking lot that's on the north side of Mount Vernon at Northwestern Highway.
Yes, across the street?
Yes, across the street from the office building. I want to point out that we have revised our parking requirements. I've always felt that this building was overparked. And I wanted to know if you've given any thought to what you would do with that parcel. My bigger issue is that currently, we have long-distance haulers who use the parking lot really illegally. It's been chained, but the chain is down. And the residents on, that abut the property on Lafayette Circle have frequently called to complain. I've had code involved and the police department involved. So, is there a plan for this, for this parking lot? I would urge you to either sell it if it's not required, or then turn it into green space. The blacktop is also shot there.
Yes, yeah, good, good question, obviously. That's an extra piece of property which needs, something needs to happen with it. Complete agreement there. The parking lot is shot, and the lighting there also is not working. So I'm sure at nighttime, it gets really dark. So, it really depends on what happens with tenancy. If our, we're expecting some large users in the building, so assuming they don't need the parking, you know, we'll probably know better in about a year or so. But assuming they don't need the parking, then absolutely, we would have to make a Plan B for that particular piece of property. I would speak with the, the planning department to see, you know, if, if we do sell it, can something be done with it? Or, or can we do something perhaps? But it's definitely on their mind, and I, I just, I actually, I actually walked the property with the assessor today, Mike Radcliffe. So, that's something that we discussed, so.
All right, I, again, keeping in mind, since, I believe you're the new owner of the property, that every so often, I get calls from residents on Lafayette Circle, and as you say, there's no lighting. And they're, apparently, either the large trucks are parked there overnight, or sometimes people are sleeping in the truck. This is, and I would agree with the residents on settling.
Yes.
So, I would like you to put this on your forefront of your thinking, that something that needs to be done about that parcel. I'm really not sure whether you're gonna need all that parking, but that'll be something you can work out with the planning department. My second concern, and it's been a concern for a long time, the landscaping on the property is, is totally overgrown. You have invasive weed trees and vines. How soon do you think that you could clear out all of this brush that hides the building, particularly on the corner of the Service Drive and Mount Vernon?
Yes, so I'm happy you asked. Actually, if you drive by tomorrow, when you get to see, you'll see that most of it's already gone. I had a, a few companies, Friday and Sunday, they were there, and most of it has been removed at this point.
Oh, wonderful. It's bugged me for a long time, and I know I spoke to the former owner about it, and nothing occurred. Obviously, I wasn't by there today.
Right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Any other, anyone have any other comments? Anyone else on the call have anything else to ask?
Madam President, this is Rochelle Freeman. Again, due to the timing and Mr. Kleiner's desire to bring in the large user, we're asking for a Rule 10 in order to set that public hearing for January 25. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell.
Yes.
I'd like to request a Rule 10 for item number 14, the Establishment of Commercial Rehabilitation District for PA 210 of 2005.
Councilwoman Banks, support.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks for an immediate need to act. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Rule 10 adopted for the scheduling of the commercial rehabilitation, PA 210 of 2005, 23800 Northwestern Highway. Counsel?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve item 14, the Establishment of the Commercial Rehabilitation District for PA 210 of 2005, as amended.
Madam President, we are actually scheduling a public hearing.
Okay.
So we're not approving that item. We're scheduling a public hearing for that item for January 25.
Okay. Thank you for that correction.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we establish a public hearing, Slide 14, as previously stated.
Madam Clerk, it's actually two public hearings, one to establish the district and one to review the request.
Right, which both falls under commercial rehabilitation district, PA. We'll just, they can vote on both of them. That's fine.
So should we do them separately?
Just to be specific, we schedule them both separately. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So this first one that's on the floor, waiting for a second, is for the public hearing.
Councilwoman Banks, support.
Okay. It's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for us to schedule the public hearing for the establishment of the commercial rehabilitation district. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
And now you're saying we need to do another vote for?
A public hearing to consider the approved, the DDK Acquisitions' request for assistance for the certificate of exemption.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll make a motion with respect to item number 14, for DDK assistance, as stated by Madam Rochelle Freeman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks, support.
Okay, it's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for us to approve the request for the assistance of the certificate of the commercial rehabilitation district.
To set the public hearing, I'm sorry, Madam President, to set the public hearing to consider approval of the DDK Acquisitions' request for assistance.
Okay. Just what Shelley just said.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Yes.
Hoskins? Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else for you, Shelley, on this?
No, thank you very much. I appreciate your suggestion.
They'll both be on the one, the January 25 as a public hearing?
Two public hearings, correct. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is to receive and file the Public Act 202, Local Government Retirement and Benefits Act, the annual report.
Good evening, Council President. This is Austin Michaels again. We are asking council to receive and file our PA 202 Annual Report on our Defined Benefit Pension and Retiree Healthcare Systems to the State. This was filed electronically with the state by the year-end deadline, and the act also requires that we submit it to council, so we are asking for a receive and file, and we would like a Rule 10 on this if possible.
Okay, council, we'll start with you, Councilwoman Morris.
I have no questions.
Okay, Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Councilman Cruz?
No questions.
Councilman Haskins?
Uh, no question, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Now they're also asking for Rule 10.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we have an immediate need to act.
Okay.
Support.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Councilwoman Morris, supported by Councilman Cruz, that we have an immediate need to act. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes, yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum? Morris?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Rule 10 adopted for item number 15 on the agenda. Okay, counsel?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we, uh, receive and file, uh, Public Act 202 of 2017, Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefits Acts Annual Report of 2020.
For?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Morris, supported by Councilman Cruz, that we, uh, approve, receive, the approval for the receive and file Public Act 202 of 2017, Protecting the Local Government Retirement and Benefits Act Annual Report for 2020. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Item number 15, receive and file Public Act 202 of 2017, Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefits Act Annual Report 2020 has been filed and received. Thank you. Our next item is, uh, the authorization to utilize the Metro Act funds.
Good evening, Your Honorable Body and Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is Lee Schultz, City Engineer. The Transportation Asset Management Plan that was presented to council at the November 16th meeting was a new state requirement related to our Act 51, Road and Bridge Network. This plan must be updated every three years. Of course, this initial preparation required significant effort by staff and our engineering consultants. I'm requesting to utilize available Metro Act funds to cover the engineering costs to prepare the TAM in an amount not to exceed $32,000. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, uh, we will entertain any questions or comments that you may have. And we'll start with you, Councilman Haskins.
Uh, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilwoman Banks?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, is Austin still on?
Yes.
Austin, uh, wait, wait, I have a question. You're going to use, uh, uh, fund balance for this. Uh, why can't you just debit, uh, the Metro Act fund? And is this coming out of unassigned fund balance?
Uh, this is coming out of our restricted fund balance. So this does not affect the ratios, uh, that the credit agencies look at as far as the unrestricted portion. And these are, these funds are included in the restricted and can only be used for these purposes, but they do take relief in action by council.
Okay, okay, well, that, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And Councilman Cruz?
Um, no questions.
Thank you. Okay, this can be moved to the consent agenda?
Thanks.
Okay. Our next item is the agreement with the Suburban Mobility Authority for regional transit, transportation.
Good evening, Council President Taylor, Councilman Mayor. Uh, this is Terry Fields, Parks and Recreation Director. Um, this is our annual agreement that we bring before council. It's the agreement with Suburban Mobility Authority for regional transportation known as SMART and it's for the municipal and community credit service and funding contract period from July 20 to June 30, 2021. Um, you will notice, um, the dollar amount is for 188,718. Um, we are asking for a budget adjustment of 2203. Uh, the reason for that, as a reminder, uh, the monies start originate with MDOT and then they are awarded to SMART in June. Excuse me, nothing is official. No contracts and dollars are official until this November, December, January time period. And in that time period, there was two communities that did not use all of their funding. And so those monies were divvied up to other Oakland County communities and we were a recipient of those dollars. So, uh, we are asking to go into an agreement with SMART for the 2020 to 2021 season, with the reminder that we can use these dollars, uh, up to two years. And I would entertain any questions.
Okay, uh, counsel, uh, starting with Councilman Mandelbaum.
Nope, no questions, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, did you, um, Terry, did you say that there was an additional $22,000?
No, I'm, it's 2200, $2,203. And that's, that's the difference. We were originally awarded 11949. And so that 2203, uh, was added on to that original total to make it 118. So all we're asking to do is have a budget adjustment of the additional $2,203, uh, which brings our total to 188.
Okay, I must be on the, this is for the SMART CARE Act funding, correct?
No, this is the, uh, agreement for, for SMART and the City of Southfield for, that's the next agenda item. The CARE, the CARE Act is for, is the next agenda item.
Okay, I'm sorry. I have the wrong one there, so no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Um, just thanks for securing those additional funds. No questions.
Thank you, sir.
And Councilman Haskins?
Uh, no questions for me. Uh, thank you.
Okay, all right. We'll move this to our consent agenda next week?
That's great. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Then our next item, the Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transit, the CARES Act funding.
Yes, I'm happy to report that this is a reimbursement grant, uh, that, uh, the City of Southfield applied for, uh, back in, uh, March, April. Actually, it was Marilyn Sosak, um, along with, uh, Buddy Brewer, who's joining me here tonight as well. She's managing our senior services and has done just an awesome job, uh, with our, with our TOS program. But this is a, uh, request to go, to receive, so I can go into a contract period of January 2020 to, uh, June 30th of 2023. Um, and this is for any costs that we experience related to COVID. Um, it can be used, for example, for the blue lights that we use to clean our buses, uh, any additional staffing. Uh, we are, uh, actually having to change our routes so that we are only taking one to two people, uh, on our buses right now. Uh, we are needing to stay with our clients, whereas before we could drop them off at their doctor's appointments. And as we all know, um, life has changed in that regard and that we now wait in our cars or on the bus until we're called in. Uh, so our drivers do have to stay with our clients. Uh, they give excellent, uh, customer service, but that does come at a cost to, to our staffing dollars. So this is for, uh, a reimbursement grant. It's for us to be able to accept it and I need the, uh, council's approval, uh, to go forward. And I entertain any questions. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, um, starting with you, Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me. I'm in support. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilwoman Banks?
I have no questions, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Cruz?
No questions as well.
Thank you. Councilman Haskins?
No questions for me, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This too will be moved to the consent agenda next week?
Thank you so much for your support. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Our next item is the budget for Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness?
Yes, Madam President. This is Administrator Zorn. The administration is requesting that the council adopt a resolution authorizing a budget adjust, adjustment to increase the Emergency Preparedness Department Personnel Expenditure uh, accounts in the amount of 180,248.27 cents, utilizing CARES Act funds and to commit an additional 450,000 of CARES funds, uh, received to future years. Um, if there's a consensus, we'd move this item to the, uh, next, uh, Tuesday's council meeting. The, uh, position is currently funded part-time, yet, uh, Justin Beck, who is acting in, in that capacity as Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, uh, has been working full-time. Um, the administration, you know, firmly believes that there is more than enough of work for this, uh, this position to become a full-time position afterward dealing with the COVID crisis. You know, it, it appears and it is very clear that historically this position is dealt with natural disasters or, um, special events. Um, the public health crisis that we're dealing really focuses a lot more effort and energy with what we're dealing with as, as a community. So we are requesting that the position become funded full-time. Um, and that we put, uh, funding in place, uh, that it would, in essence, have, uh, an additional two years, uh, of funding. Happy to answer any questions?
Okay. Uh, we'll turn it over to counsel for questions, comments, starting with you, Councilwoman Banks?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, Mr. Zorn, uh, will we have to refill Justin's old position?
We've actually al- already started that, uh, Mr. Councilman Brightwell. He, that position, uh, in Public Works is budgeted. Uh, he is one of our supervisors and, uh, that position i- is posted. Uh, I still need someone to do the work that he did while he was in that position. It's created a, a real strain in our Public Works group.
Yeah, you know, that was, that was my point. I've dealt with Justin since I've been on council, an outstanding employee and, uh, obviously he's done a stellar job with respect to, uh, this homeland security, uh, position. And I just know that, uh, obviously, uh, that position would have to be filled in Public Works, you know, because he did such a stellar job there also. Um, so you feel comfortable enough that, and I'm not, I support just 100%, but after two years, you feel that the job will not be revert back to part-time?
I, actually, I, I think we need two years to make that call. You know, over the years, we've done a couple of public health campaigns and then there were things that I think to see the city do more of. And it's not just, you know, the, the preparedness training, work with our police and fire, but also more interaction with the business community in reviewing their emergency preparedness plans for all events, natural disasters, the flood, the storm, the power outages, uh, civil unrest, uh, as, as well as, as public health, uh, concerns. Um, you know, it, it, the, the position is evolving. When I reviewed this, you know, in, in the seventies, uh, Public Act 390 of 1976 was passed and it, you know, uh, every time it's amended, these new positions, it's expanded. Uh, we are one of the few cities that have our, our size, that have our own emergency preparedness. And I think that's part of what the next two years will be about. How can we can expand this into a full-time position that there's a, uh, a return on that investment coming back to the community? After we're, you know, God willing, done with this COVID crisis, a two-year period to, you know, continue the aftermath of how we inoculate a population. And I think as we watch this virus mutate, you know, this will become more like the flu, um, that there will be new mutant, new mutations that we have to get our, a population inoculated for every year. Is also, I, I, I think we need to wait and see. That's why we're looking to put three years uh, in place to see where we can take this.
Okay, I'm, I'm 100% supportive of this. And my question is actually based on the fact that I know Justin's a very good employee. Now I would hate to see him underutilized two, three years down the road when things are not, uh, materializing, uh, from that previously, you know, it was, it was a part-time job and, and I hate to see Justin in that position, not 100% utilizing because he's a, I think I've sung his praises enough, right, already. So if you feel comfortable in three years that this will be a, a full-time job and, and Justin would be 100% utilized, I'm, I'm comfortable with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Cruz?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, Mr. Zorn, I, I, and, and, I think Mr. Brightwell was kind of getting at what I was thinking. Uh, so you're asking for a full-time temporary for two years or three years?
Well, it, the funding would be in place to finish the, the cost of the position through this June 30th of '21 and then the funding would go through June 30th of '23.
Okay. And this is also prompted by the COVID pandemic?
Well, the COVID pandemic and then after discussion with our business development officer, um, there are some things that, you know, we're, we're not doing. In, in the past, we, we were in the business community reviewing their emergency, uh, preparedness plans. Uh, there's more things we could be doing as a community to make sure we're better prepared. Um, part of my, you know, historically, we focused on, you know, the, the windstorm, the floods, uh, civ, you know, some civil disobedience, uh, unrest, um, power outages. The position in, in the public health arena could, could take on a, 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 a greater role. And, uh, you know, obviously it's going to be dealing with COVID. I believe there will be a lot of residual with COVID is how we deal with that a- as a community and how that can impact our, uh, local economy as well as the state and national economy. You know, so we're, we're looking to see where we can take this. And frankly, a lot of cities our size do have a full-time position. Um, you know, when we cut it down to part-time, uh, pre-pandemic, we were just doing the basic, the special events. And when, uh, if a flood happened, we were pulling people out of, of, of Public Works. So, you know, I, 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 I think we can grow this and, uh, it come the budget season of '23, '24. Um, i- if we don't see that, that ROI, that return on our investment coming back, then my recommendation would be that the city reevaluate that.
Okay. When we, uh, previously Bill Johns was in this role, is that correct?
That, that is, Bill Johns was, was in the role. He was full-time and he was doing a lot, uh, with the business community, calling on them and, and reviewing their, their emergency plans. He was doing the CPR training and there were things in that where that coordination could be picked up i- as well.
Okay, so.
If, 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 if I may, may, make, uh, Councilman Cruz, you know, one of the things- you know, one of the things, uh, Justin does have FEMA certifications. And why I supported a person from Public Works moving into this position was it seems that after the initial crisis, all the paperwork was being completed by our Public Works group.
Okay. Is so, is HR written up a job description for him for these couple of years?
We are, are working on that. There is language actually defined in the act as well as there's, uh, chapter five in the city charter. This is a mayor's appointment.
I would, uh, add that, um, Bill Johns', um, uh, pay was split between Homeland Security and the Fire Department.
Yeah.
Had, uh, some duties with the Fire Department, but mostly he worked, um, with the, uh, Emergency Preparedness, Homeland Security.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I understand that. Okay. All right. Well, I, I don't have a problem with it. I was, I just want, I just had those couple of questions. Uh, that's all, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no, all my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you. So, real quick, um, the one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, is that for, uh, solely for Justin in his salary?
That's salary and fringe benefits. Is Mr. Michael still on the phone? On the call? That would be salary fringe benefits. Go ahead, Austin, please.
Uh, yeah, that one hundred and eighty thousand actually covers, um, the entirety of the, from the onset of the pandemic through December, and it is a combination of salary and benefits.
Okay, and this is all CARES Act funding?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. No, thank you. No, Justin does a great job. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Madam President, if I could, so, um, Justin will be getting his back pay. But you said from the pandemic on, so he'll be getting paid for work that he's done already, or?
Oh, um, I can answer that one. Uh, Justin has been paid throughout this. This is really just a cleanup of the books as to where, uh, which department his costs are recorded in.
Okay, got you. Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does anyone else have any questions or anything regarding this item? Anyone else on the call that has a question? Okay, then we can move this to our consent agenda for next week.
Council President?
Yes, uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, yes, I do have a question to Mr. Zorn. Um, in two years, if for some reason you feel that we do not need this system, I'm sorry, and maybe you already answered this. What's, would Justin go back to his, um, to DBW?
I, I, I believe he would have some rights to go back to his position. That's where this can get a little tricky. Uh, I would want to address, address the topic in, in the budget. But, you know, I firmly believe, I'd like to really see where we could take this to benefit the city and put it in a stronger position. We're dealing with the immediate crisis, but there are some additional things that, you know, I, I think as a community that we could see this position go. One is better, better preparedness, uh, enhancing our communication plans. But I think the public health arena is going to become a much larger arena. And even as the city planner was talking about his master plan, to, to make a greater commitment to social justice and equity inclusion, I think many of those same things could be said about what we do with this position and how we better prepare ourselves a, as a community in dealing with, obviously, first and foremost, you know, uh, civil defense type issues, natural disasters, you know, how are we better prepared for emergencies? And I think though that preparedness needs to begin to better speak to, uh, public health crises like the, the one we're, we're dealing with now.
And then prior to Mr. Johns, Frank, this is what Frank Coots used to also do, correct? Full-time?
That's correct.
Okay, so, yes, this, you know, I, with my, um, years with the city, I've been in two situations where we had a total blackout and forgot what the other one was. But, you know, the emergent, we, at that time, we called the Emergency Management Director. He played a very, very vital role, and not sure if I ever understood why we went down to part-time, but. Okay, I was just wondering if for some reason, you know, you, we felt this wasn't warranted in two years, would he have an opportunity to go back? And you answered that question. Thank you.
Yeah. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Cruz, I, I, I really echo, uh, what Ms. Banks just asked. Um, I, I think that Justin definitely should have a, uh, first dibs, if you will, going back to his old job. If this is not found to be something that will last long time, long time and long term, as well as whoever backfills him in his previous position, should be hired on a temporary basis, uh, so that, uh, we're not hiring somebody full-time. And if he ends up going back overstaffed, so, uh, that's just a suggestion on my part to think about that before.
And the administration will, uh, take those, that, those comments very seriously. I don't have the collective bargaining agreements in front of me, but I believe the agreements address, uh, those, uh, scenarios. And, you know, the position has in the past been full-time. I think this is about an opportunity to put in something that's, gives, provides the community with a greater return on its investment as well as accountability. And, and, and I've got to note, this is not a city administrator's appointment, but a mayor's appointment, and it could change with that position as well.
Okay, so we'll move this to the consent agenda for next week.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, the last thing I just added was the, uh, council retreat. There was some discussion between administration and myself, and I said we should bring it to council. I don't know how comfortable everyone would be if we were to meet in person, maybe in a large conference room, and, uh, present information, social distancing. We'd have to limit the number of people if that was possible. Uh, so I was just throwing this out here to see how many people would be interested or willing to do a council retreat. And it would be for a day. It would not be overnight or anything like that, maybe five, six hours, because there's a number of things that the full council needs to hear and discuss sooner rather than later. And, um, so I'm, I'm just going to open that up if, um, anybody have any comments, uh, or if you would say yes or no. So I'll just go through the council list and ask everybody. If you're in favor of having a council retreat, a face-to-face, maybe five, six-hour retreat, social distancing, large room, yes or no, any comments that you might have. And, um, I'll start with you again, Councilman Brightwell.
I would prefer until everyone is vaccinated. It's simply because the vaccine is available, and, um, although social distancing is, is good, but the vaccine is currently available. So I would prefer not to do anything in person until everyone is vaccinated.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Um, I'm good for a retreat either way, in person or, uh, via online, some way, Zoom, or same way we're doing it here. Uh, I do just think it's something necessary for us to do, so, uh, I'm good either way.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, I, I would be fine with, um, either, uh, in-person or even a virtual one. Um, if it's important that we, we do have some sort of retreat, uh, to be able to discuss these things. I just want that you said, um, it maybe be five or six hours?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'd be fine with that. Just, just a lot of, a lot of social distance.
Yes. Uh, okay. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, I'm okay either way, um, in-person or over the phone, over the computer. Doesn't matter to me either way.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
I would prefer a virtual retreat at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then Councilwoman Banks?
Um, thank you. Um, I would love to have an in-person retreat. However, um, like Mr. Brightwell, um, I'd like, you know, to see how many people or if we, if we're all vaccinated. Can we, um, maybe see like within, like in February where everyone is? I know, you know, the hospitals are starting to send out invitations to be vaccinated, and, you know, the first part of February, um, many of us, you know, will already, you know, have been vaccinated. I don't know.
Okay.
Can we come back and visit us the first part of February? I personally would like to be in person, but I'm not comfortable unless we're vaccinated.
Okay. And, and I apologize, as I should have said, we were looking at somewhere like the end of February for the retreat. But, uh, these are all good feedback, and, uh, we'll discuss it, and of course, we'll get back to you very, very shortly. And I guess we can also include, um, Melissa Menacy and ask her about vaccines and things like that.
Madam, Madam President, this is the State Clerk. I, I just want to, um, if I could add, there was something, someone said something about limiting the people. Um, just want to caution, if we had a retreat, it is open to the public. So we couldn't, like, turn people aware or anything because it would be considered a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So I just want that to be taken into consideration as well.
Great. Thank you for that reminder.
So I don't want anybody thinking that we're not including them or they're being excluded if a in-person retreat was to take place because that's a violation.
Uh, you're correct. Thank you. Did anyone else have a comment or concern or question? Okay. Next, we have our communications.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I received a text from someone that the call-in number is not working for public comment.
Um, I, I did send that over to the clerk. Uh, I don't know if you had a chance to look at anything, Madam Clerk, or?
Ye- yes, I did. It's just, it's an updated, um, the access code, uh, was, was not correct. So the, the updated access code, uh, should be, uh, one seven nine nine three six seven two one two. Again, that's one seven nine nine three six seven two one two. And it is up on this screen on the, our website, um, is incorrect. But I do think we do have a couple of people that's holding right now for public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Mandelbaum, will you be our timekeeper tonight?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, whenever you're ready, Madam Clerk.
We're ready. I unmute it, uh, individuals that were on the attendee list.
Okay. Our first caller, whenever you're ready.
Hello, is anyone there?
Can you hear me?
Oh, now we can.
Okay.
We're not hearing anything.
Hang on. Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee. Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. Madam President, tonight, I wish to talk about Section eleven point eighteen. Eleven point eighteen in the Southfield City Charter. Section eleven point eighteen is entitled Amendments, which describes how to amend the Southfield City Charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy two-step Michigan state law, known as the Michigan Home Rule Act of nineteen oh nine. Thus making Section eleven point eighteen null and void. Eleven point eighteen became null and void way back in nineteen fifty-eight, when the Southfield founding fathers attempted to adapt the Michigan Home Rule Act into the initial Southfield City Charter. That's when the nine members of the then Charter Commission mistakenly deleted the second step in a two-step process. State law mandates yesterday and today that there be two, two steps, not one, but two. It takes two, two state mandatory steps to amend the Southfield City Charter. State mandatory step number one. The Southfield City Council, that's you folks, must first of all pass a proposed charter amendment. And then the next step, the deleted step, that is, the aforementioned missing step, the state mandatory step. Step number two. The Southfield voters, that's us folks, must pass by ballot election Council's proposed charter amendment. Unfortunately, eleven point eighteen removes us folks out of the picture altogether. That is, eleven point eighteen totally deletes state mandatory step number two, the ballot election. In conclusion, after sixty-three years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and do your job and fix Section eleven point eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Our next speaker?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Good evening to the council.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to wish all of you a happy Kwanzaa Hanukkah New Year and hope that we have a better and more professional year conducting these meetings via web or teleconference. You know, Madam Chair, you said that you wanted all of your council colleagues to mute their microphones. I wish that you can hear what we hear. It is very equivalent to the potato chip bags moving or people smacking on candy or eating food. Let me remind all of you that you are still on the people's payroll for these meetings, even though we can't see you. It is appalling to get the wrong access information on the city's website. It is almost a dereliction of duty. If you want to see and hear how a professional webinar meeting is supposed to be conducted, tune into McComb Township, and I think we can learn something. Councilman Mandelbaum, I want to thank you for letting the chairwoman know when you did not answer right away. You said that you was having technical difficulty with your equipment, and we, me and my husband and I, we really appreciate that. But some of these council members, you sound lackadaisical, you sound uninterested, and you're not even on the phone to answer the questions when the chairwoman asks you for your input. You are still on the people's payroll, which means when this meeting is being You are still on the people's payroll, which means when this meeting is being conducted, you need to be there, be on time with your answers, and be paying attention. And a lot of you are not doing that. I think that you're being very disrespectful to the chairwoman. And all of you that have been presidents before or presided over the meetings before, you would not want to be treated like that. So Councilwoman Lenny Taylor, who is the chair of this council, this honorable body, deserves the respect. And if you can't give it to her, hang up and get off the phone and don't participate in the meeting, and we'll dock your pay for missing this meeting. And I really believe, Madam Chair, you need to consider giving the people back five minutes. If we have to sit here and listen to all this noise and chewing and smacking and disrespect, we deserve five minutes to speak. And I'm stopping at two minutes and fifty-five seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have anyone else that wishes to speak tonight?
Madam President, we don't have anyone else.
Okay. Um, uh, council, is there anyone on council that has wanted to say or add or make any comments before we end the meeting?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Um, I, we talked about this, um, earlier today when, when I, when we spoke, but, um, can we continue, uh, what we started last year with if council members had something specific they wanted discussed at a future meeting that we can, um, work to add that to the agenda for a, a committee of a whole? If there's, you know, things, uh, specific that, that council members want discussed that we can allow that opportunity?
Uh, absolutely. Like I said previously, things that we're working for is from our previous, uh, president, President Cruz, and council president, Pro Tim, uh, Morris, that we will continue. And I know one of the things that they, uh, did was ask us to forward to them any concerns, questions, or things that they would like brought before council for discussion. So I would ask everyone if they would please, um, send to me whatever, uh, questions or concerns or things that they would like for us to, uh, bring forward for discussion, um, at this time. Um, I'd also like to ask, um, from a conversation that both, um, Ari and I had earlier today, that the question of the rule tens, we did have a lot tonight, and we understand this is the first meeting of the year. But if we could put together, and I guess I'm, I don't know who to ask in the city to do this, either it would be Fred or the clerk, maybe a, a project plan so that we would know what's upcoming? Like when we put, uh, contracts, we know that they're going to be due on a certain time. Maybe we could start planning for that so that when something has to be renewed or upgraded or signed or coming close to closure, that we would know in enough time so that we don't necessarily have to have rule tens when it's possible. I know that there's always something that comes up. That's why we have the, uh, ability to have a rule ten. But if we can prevent that and be prepared, uh, maybe we could do something like that. And that's just a thought that we were discussing earlier.
Madam President, the clerk, the clerk and I can ha- have that conversation.
Okay. All right. In, uh, is there anyone else on council that wanted to make a comment or had anything that's on their mind? Then I'd like to ask.
If not, um, Madam Chair, um, this is Mayor Seiver. I would like to inform the council of, um, the passing this weekend of Deborah R. Smith. Uh, Deborah Smith was a longtime, um, Southfield resident, and she served on, um, COSA, uh, for a number of years as well as, um, uh, the Southfield Complete Count Committee, was active in her Beacon Square Neighborhood Association. Um, uh, her death, uh, at age fifty-seven, um, is, um, a shock to many of us who, uh, knew Deborah. Uh, she was also an involved parent in the Southfield Public Schools. Uh, if you hadn't heard that, I wanted you to, everyone to know that.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was going to say, did anyone else on the call have anything else they wanted to add or bring to our attention? Administration or mayor or anyone? The clerk?
Uh, Madam President, just wanted to add, um, over the holiday break, we've, uh, received an email from our lobbyists explaining that, um, the legislative did extend our Open Meetings Act, so we are, uh, able to continue the remote meetings throughout, uh, March thirty-first. Uh, additionally, we did pass a resolution, um, in the event that they did not extend it. So the current, uh, extension of the OMA does override our resolution, um, that we did pass a few weeks ago. Um, if there's any questions, I'm sure that our attorney King would be more than happy to answer, or if I can answer them, I will answer them to the best of my ability. Um, so, uh, we are, uh, all set, um, until, uh, March thirty-first. And just want to also encourage individuals to continue to wash your hands and practice a good hygiene and stay safe, um, as we all may be COVID fatigue, but it's still real, um, and it's still, uh, taking lives of people that we love and care about. So let's continue to be diligent, um, so that we can beat this, uh, COVID-nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and, um, um, Attorney King, did you have a response, please, for, um?
Yes.
Mr. Mullins?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. In regards to the comment on section eleven point eighteen of the Southfield City Charter, uh, Mr. Mullins was correct that there are two ways when we have an amendment. Uh, the first one is three-fifths of a vote by the elected body on a resolution, which is then taken to the legislature, I'm sorry, excuse me, to the Attorney General who reviews it and then is approved by the governor. And then it is put, put on a ballot and taken to the electors. And then a second way is with a petition, um, and then the same thing, it is put on the ballot, it goes to Public Act two seventy-nine. In our charter language, it says Public, uh, Act two seventy-nine as amended. So therefore, anytime we do an amendment, we do follow the two ways that Mr. Mullins mentioned, but also we are still subject to Public Act two seventy-nine as amended, meaning that every time Public Act two seventy-nine changes, we are going to have to comply with that. And currently, the two ways you said, by the resolution of the, uh, city's legislative body or by petition, and then it is put on the ballot. But it is not outdated.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Anyone have any other comments, anything at all? Okay. Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.